No, just advise me, I don't think we have a quorum.
Mr. Speaker, there are three, four, including yourselves, in attendance, five, in attendance of the President, and two, four, five, there's five of you. There is no quorum.
Okay, we'll wait, thank you.
Oh, you already finished, what part did you want to finish?
I only have the ultrasound.
Only the ultrasound?
Yeah.
Oh, but the MRI?
Jimmy? Your port, right? Didn't we do Javina Ahon about two weeks ago?
That was a public hearing.
Right, so...
Right. Uh, it wasn't two weeks ago, I... Is it ten, is it ten days already perhaps?
Yes, I just wanted to know, did you want to put her on?
I'd like to put her on.
Yeah, so we can ask Rory, so can you get the committee report up? Who else? I think you did a couple, right?
Uh, well, the EPA guys were...
But Javina was like two, two weeks ago, right?
Javina was, yeah. Uh, your first witness, I'd like to separate from the other.
You know what, you should turn around there, go back to where you were, so you come back.
Okay.
That's a trick.
That's the trick, right, Rory?
That's a trick.
Chief, what was I gonna tell you?
Don't listen to that trick.
Oh, yeah, it is the trick.
Hello. Uh, this is, uh, this is, uh, Samida. I'm looking for a, uh, speed deck meeting here. And I want to buy a, uh, a car. A stock house, uh, speed deck, a stock house, uh, with you. Yes. Yeah, a stock house. Okay, I'll check again.
Now, vice speaker, sit. I just find it... Let me double check. If she's not coming in, then, yeah. Uh, is she coming? Okay, there, yes, T, it would be him.
Yes, I mean, yeah, it's, that can be just a laugh, I just wanted to check. And so, yeah, we can get around.
Yeah, who else? And you had a couple besides her, I mean, forget EPA, but the board, the ones you did. You can just have them checked, because they didn't... Did you do two?
Um, I think we already proved that.
It's spelled P-R-U-B-E-C-H-O.
Julie. Hi, um, do you want to decide just now or the, uh, party, or... Well, they wanted to play it up a little bit today, but then, uh, I found it very, uh, today, and it was here, so, whatever you want. Then, then...
Which, P-R-U-B-E-C-H-O, the W-A-K-I?
Hi, later.
Oh, you're welcome, Jimmy.
Pardon me?
It's spelled B-U-E-N, correct, so it's a M-A. B-U-E-N, correct, so. P-R-U-B-E-C-H-O. Correct, so P as a P. Correct, I...
I can see my, uh, double shift, but there's also one three seven three, that is resulting from a purchase, you know, uh, that's not, the Democratic Party. His son bought a piece of property in, uh, Chicago, and there's a slip of government that he'd be...
Oh, yeah.
So, he wanted to buy it, so... Well, so, you know what, sir, I'm telling you, because, you know, all you, all you want is a purchase, and you pay your... No, no. That's it? Yes. Let me see. Okay, that's good. Can I just, you, you, please, you guys, the bank, you guys, uh, approved in June, uh, guaranteed, you could, I don't know, from the... So, let, can't... So, and, and, uh, the bank wants two more concessions, like, the streetlight loan, you guys, uh, approved of the waiver, of the interest, uh, from taxation, and then you also asked me to be guaranteed, and I gave the book and the bill, if the government of could guarantee enough. They're asking for the waiver of sovereign interest, so there's cases involved, and you've, you've already said, okay, that's good to, to prove. Okay? The VCOC, it's...
It was, uh... It was just the stomach injury.
In what way?
No, no, it was the... Yeah, just, yeah. Because they, not ahead of the topic, right? No, they, uh, swelling went down and it's really, so... So, I'm okay. Because my, uh, tubes were a little, were smaller. Who did this? Where's Rory? Elena Todd wrote and said that he, they were accosted in a public hearing. It says, "Hafadi Honorable Senators, I'm writing, I'm writing this email to first of all say that I'm sorry, cannot be in session today, to watch the discussions and express my opinion. I arrived yesterday afternoon to sit in the public hearing room and fold a sign, and I was accosted and harassed by two men. They initially yelled at everyone near me as well, but then focused in on me alone and my skin color, and continued to yell derogatory comments at me as I placed my sign on the window. I decided that I did not want to endure such verbal abuse and left, but they followed me on site, continuing the battery of, of racist and unnecessary comments. Having grown up as a howling here in Guam, I am no stranger to the bullying, but I am disappointed that it occurred at a place where everyone is supposed to have a democratic right to voice. There was no one there to help me, so security stopped them, so I left."
Ben? Okay, I've got them. Okay, the legislators, uh, clerk, can we check, we have a quorum, please?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Mr. Speaker, there are, there is a quorum.
Thank you. Senator Guttsch, you're recognized. Last time we were, we recessed, we were at, um, with Senator Guttsch and, um, to work on an amendment to Bill, um, to, uh, seven two, Senator Guttsch, you're recognized, and good morning. But before I start, I'd like to just, um, indicate that Senator, but, uh, uh, we'll be, uh, in maybe later on today. She's just recovering from, uh, slight flu, so she's, we're on our way in later on. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Speaker, uh, if you recall, prior to, uh, recessing yesterday afternoon, Senator Spisho...
Okay, let's get started. Legislature is back in session. Senator Rispia, you're recognized. Senator Rispia, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I rise in full support of Bill 272. And I'm very happy to be a part of this piece of legislation which is being introduced by the good senator from Mangilau. And I also appreciate some of the comments being expressed by those members here who support, who support a legislative attempt to ensure that whenever an initiative is placed before the voters, that we get the maximum participation possible. The best example of what I'm talking about, Mr. Speaker, is this, this single issue that has come before the voters over the last four general, primary, or even special elections. And some of us who did not support this initiative have said that no means no means no means no means no. And while everybody has a right to an initiative and we want to protect and preserve that, we also have to recognize the hundreds of thousands of dollars that are being spent by the proponents and even the thousands, tens of thousands of dollars that are being spent by the opponents of these initiatives, Mr. Speaker. Not to mention the amount of taxpayer money that goes into preparing all these educational pamphlets, printing ballots. So it's really a, a big expense and burden to the taxpayers of Guam, especially almost borderline on an insult when you say that you're going to propose an initiative to revitalize Guam's economy, but yet it costs so much money to put that initiative forward. And we want to also make sure that in every instance these initiatives are put before the voters, that you have it where you have the greatest participation possible. This is one reason why I would always want to preserve the Santis amendment to make sure, Mr. Speaker, that special interests does not rule the day, whether it's special interest legislation, or whether it's an initiative put on by special interest group. One of the biggest misperceptions of the Santis amendment, people claim that if you, if you go and you vote for your favorite gubernatorial team, if it's a gubernatorial election, or your, your list of senators from your favorite party, or from both sides of the parties, or your favorite mayor, vice mayor, and your favorite delegate, and your favorite public auditor, and all these other elected positions, Mr. Speaker, if you, if you get a ballot for an initiative and you, you, you don't mark that ballot at all, you don't mark it yes, or you don't mark it no, and you submit a blank, some people against, who are against the Santis amendment, have argued that a blank ballot is counted as a no vote. It's really not counted as a no vote, but it's counted toward the total number of votes cast to make sure that you do garner 50% plus one. There's nothing wrong with that. Some people would argue that there is because it, it puts a chilling effect on an individual's right to vote. But when you live in a democracy, you want to implement the wishes of the majority, but at the same time protect the rights of the minority. And sometimes when we have these initiatives in non, in off gubernatorial election years, sometimes when you have an initiative where it's primary election, when it's just senators, or, or as we've seen recently, where you have several mayors that were already certified in the primary, or certified by acclamation because they don't have an opponent, you saw, Mr. Speaker, in those villages, the voter turnout was at best dismal. So there's nothing wrong with a bill that's being put forward by the good senator from Mangilau and others to say, if someone wants to have an initiative, fine. We need to protect that process, protect that right. But we also have to protect our island community and make sure that that initiative is presented to the people where you have the maximum number of voter participation. I want to commend Speaker Panglinan, the good senator from Baragata, who took the bill as originally introduced and amended it this way to make sure that we have a mechanism. There won't be a guarantee that just because it's a gubernatorial election that voter participation will be high, but I think more than likely, we can speculate that it'll be higher than if it were a election where there was no gubernatorial candidate or gubernatorial tickets on that, on that, on that election. So having said that, I want to move an amendment. This, this amendment was copied and provided to all the members of this legislature. And it builds on what I said earlier, Mr. Speaker, where no means no means no means no. And if we were to, to take out Section 2, which it was previously deleted, we might find ourselves in a situation where no might mean maybe. And so let's move toward ensuring that no means no means no. And I offer a new Section 2 that would read subsection 17202.1, period. If an initiative measure is not approved by voters in any general or special election, no initiative measure proposing a similar or related subject shall be submitted to the voters for at least four years after the date of such election. What this would do, Mr. Speaker, essentially is that if an election was presented to the people and it failed to get voter approval by the majority of the voters in this last 2008 general election, or any election prior, then that initiative with a similar or related subject will not be eligible until the, until four years, and then it'll be eligible after every gubernatorial election. So this section would just cover any initiative that was put before the people already. And beginning with the 2010 gubernatorial election, if an initiative is presented to the people and it failed to get voter approval by the majority of voters, then certainly that initiative can be brought up in the following gubernatorial election, which is 2014. And so I offer this first amendment to Bill, to this Bill 272.
On the amendment, Senator Tenorio.
Thank you, good morning, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I, this is similar to the previous provision which was struck in the amendment I have two concerns with this. First and foremost, the similar or related subject, I don't know that is sufficiently clear to determine that, actually, I think related subject is so broad that it could be including a number of different issues. Related subject has to do with gambling, let's say, and is there any, any ancillary issue that could be even close or remotely attached to it, can be brought before the people that has anything remotely close to gambling can be rejected because it has the tinge of gambling associated with it? So, I mean to say that I would like, if at all possible, a similar or related subject to replace with the language something along the lines of substantially similar subject, or something that has some basis in law. Is there some Blacks Law dictionary, or some precedent case that we can, that we can use as a basis for saying what is similar or related subject? And, and with that, you know, I'll, I'll ask the author to comment. And the other thing is, my concern with this is the, the concern about the four years. So if read, if read, and I, and I think that we all know where we're going here. Assuming that we, election were held as we did in just a few days prior to this session, that we had a general election, and this is 2008. Now, 2010, there will be no referendum or initiative on the same matter. And then 2012, that matter can then be brought again. If that is the, if that is the end result of this, then it's more palatable than the original section, which had five years, first of all. So that means that in 2008, we have Prop 8. In 2010, we do not have Prop 8, and then in 2012, we do. If that's the end result, or if that's the consequence of this language, then, again, it's more palatable than the original one. So, shall not, I'm sorry. If an initiative measure is not approved by voters in any general or special election, no initiative measure proposing a similar or related subject shall be submitted to voters for at least four years after the date of such election. Does that skip 2012 and bring it to 2014? Because we're talking about after the date of the election. So that means you have to skip one, which is 2009, two, which is 2010, three, 2011, and four, 2012. You have to skip those years, unless I'm reading it wrong.
Yeah, I don't think so.
So, I just want to be clear that what we're doing, what we want to do is what we're doing, rather than saying what we're going to do in the effective substantive portion of this bill, is that we're actually skipping two general election cycles. So my first concern is similar or related subject. If there's no basis in law, some precedence, Blacks Law dictionary, Lord, we have two lawyers in the hall I'm sure can answer the question, and I'm sure my good minority legal counsel is currently working on that, previously on the internet, or in other books that are available to him. But those are the things I want to see answered, and, and I'll pose the question to the mover of this amendment, because as we removed the previous section, or we, we did the amendment yesterday, we talked about having it in gubernatorial year. And I don't, again, referencing my comments yesterday, I don't necessarily agree with that either. But if you're going to have an election, every other general election, in other words, you're going to have to skip one general election, and it's going to be heard in the next general election, that's more palatable than the current, or the, the previous section. And then the second one is the, the legal issue. So I'd ask the author if he could speak to, to the, to those two issues.
Senator Rispia, you?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Speaker, and I want to thank the previous speaker for those comments, and I do appreciate them. You know, the, I'll address your first question regarding how do we determine if there could be similar related subject matters, and how do we make those determinations? The current law, 3GCA, allows the Guam Election Commission to have unrelated subjects prohibited. So it says an initiative measure embracing unrelated subjects may not be submitted to the voters. And so rebuilding from that current language in the code, we wanted to expand it to say, to determine whether or not, the basis of which an initiative shall be deemed ineligible. Now, in answer to your second question, Ms. Speaker, I'll address you in answering the question. The gentleman asked whether or not, if, if, for example, this initiative that recently failed in the 2008 election, if that's going to be eligible in four years, would that then initiative be brought up in 2012 versus 2014? Well, the, the, the overall bill says that initiative shall only be presented to the people in a general election where a governor or lieutenant governor is on the ballot. And so in answer to that question, and that initiative that previously failed would then be eligible to be submitted to the voters in the 2014 general election. I admit, Mr. Speaker, it's a very, very difficult issue, it's a very fine line that we have to walk. On one hand, we have to protect this democratic form of government we have. On the other hand, we want to make sure that things that are adopted by initiative are adopted by, by the greatest maximum number of people participating. The way the current law reads, it says you can just bring any initiative up in a general election, which could mean a general election for, for the legislature, for the mayors. And, and so we saw what happens when we have a general election, and the, there's either not enough candidates to fill those particular positions, or those particular seats, and that it's not enticing enough to bring more voters out than you would have if it were a gubernatorial. than you would have if it were a gubernatorial election.
Senator Tenorio.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I appreciate the response from the mover of this amendment. I do understand the reference to the Guam Election Commission. And again, you know, I don't need to reiterate my objection to the previous amendment which passed, which places in the gubernatorial election. I do believe that the numerical sequence which I articulated between 2008 and 2012 effectively does, except for the amendment yesterday, does not allow this to be placed on the 2000. Let's say 2010 then is the basis. 2010, excuse me, based on the previous amendment, would place, next, next general election would be the gubernatorial election of 2010. That is when, based on the previous amendment, the next initiative may be heard. So, and notwithstanding all the previous amendments, let's just talk about generalities. So in 2010, there'll be a gubernatorial election. Count four years after that election, you cannot place the same initiative once failed on a general election gubernatorial ballot. That's the effect. So again, 2010, after the election, 2011, 12, 13, 14, after the election. It means you have to wait, again, I may be wrong, I hope I'm wrong, but I don't think so. If you say, and using the previous amendment which was moved yesterday, that you're going to tie it to a gubernatorial election, and it can only be done in a gubernatorial election, then why don't you change this number to three? Because the operative mechanisms in the current scenario is that you can only do it in a gubernatorial election, and only if it's rejected. So why don't you just say that all initiatives can only be done in a gubernatorial election and be done with it? That way, you get what you're trying to get done, and you get away from the ambiguity the four years after it's been rejected. Just say it's going to be done in a gubernatorial election and remove the ability for people to have initiatives in any other period, in any other form, period, done. Rather than going through the four years after it's been rejected, whether it was approved or not, just say it can only be done. If that's what you want to do, then do that. Because I think, again, I may be wrong, and I hope I am, but I think you're setting yourself up for failure for an eight-year period from which initiatives can be heard.
Can I offer a point of information before?
Senator Respecho.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Just a point of information, this is exactly what this bill does. There are two issues here. The first issue is, we want to provide for greater voter participation, so we're saying initiative shall only be presented in a general election where there's a governor and lieutenant governor candidate. Senator Cruz here just gave me some stats, statistics with the 2004 election. There were nineteen thousand five hundred seventy-three voters. 2008, there were seventeen thousand two hundred and thirty-two voters. However, in this, I'm sorry, I was just reading the number of votes he got, this top vote getter here to my left. Total registered voters were fifty-four thousand nine hundred and forty, and in 2008, there were fifty thousand eight hundred and six registered voters. But the total that voted in 2004 was at least thirty-six thousand one hundred and twenty-three, and in 2008, there were thirty-five thousand zero nine one, so, yeah. But on the special election, they point out there's only eight thousand six hundred sixty-five residents that went out to vote. So you could have, but the total, but the total number that voted of the fifty thousand is seventeen thousand. So you could see that there, there is greater, there will be greater participation if we had the statistics that showed how many people actually voted, where there's a governor and lieutenant governor on the ballot. And then, and then the second thing is, this amendment that I'm offering, Mr. Speaker, to determine the ineligibility of these initiatives, it's only for any initiative that has already been presented to the people, more specifically this current initiative that we, we just disposed of. And so after, after that, we wouldn't ever have to compel the Election Commission to determine whether or not an initiative failed can be brought up again. They can bring this initiative up over and over and over. However, they can only bring it up whenever there's a gubernatorial team on the ballot. Thank you for allowing me to offer that point of information.
Thank you, Senator Respecho. Is there any discussion on Senator Respecho's amendment? You're going to, Senator Guthers, then Senator Blas?
I've been listening intently to the discussion, and I, I think that some of Senator Tenorio's points are, are good ones, and what I've done is I've incorporated some of his concerns and those of others in this hall into a revision of Senator Respecho's amendment. It's a slight variation, but I think it incorporates some of the concerns that have been raised. And I'd like to just read it if I may, if Senator Respecho will allow me to, if he has no objection. What the revision to Senator Respecho's amendment says is that if an initiative measure is not approved by voters in any general or special election, no initiative measure proposing a substantially similar or related subject shall be submitted to voters for at least four years after the date of such election. The Guam Election Commission shall be responsible for determining whether an initiative measure proposes a substantially similar or related subject of a previously defeated measure. So if there's no objection, I'd like to offer this as a substitute to Senator Respecho's amendment.
Are there any objections to this substitute amendment? There being no objection, so ordered to amend. On the Guthers amendment, Senator Blas, still want to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Actually, the amendment by Senator Guthers did answer the question, or did provide the answer for the concern that I had.
Okay, on the amendment to, Senator Espaldonia, recognize.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I appreciate the contribution of Senator Guthers on this matter. However, just, there's two things. One is, she added the word substantially before the word similar, and I just want to make sure that perhaps we should include the, and I know I can't make an amendment to an amendment to an amendment, but the, the problem with the way this is written is that substantially refers to the word similar and not necessarily to the word related subject. So in other words, if somebody were to read it, at least in a legal sense, no initiative measure proposing a substantially similar or related subject. So related, the word related is not confined by the word, or the word substantially does not apply to the word related. It can be interpreted that way, and there I can foresee a possible court action just to make that determination of whether substantially relates to the word similar and the word related, or does it just relate to the word similar, or does it define, you know, the word similar? So again, I think that's probably one of the technical flaws, the way it's written. I mean, again, the argument can be made that the word substantially does apply to the word similar and the word related, but the other argument can also be made that it only refers to the word similar and not to the word related. Because, and, and the critical point here is that if we don't, if you don't have substantially related to the subject matter, then anything can be argued that it's related. In other words, let's take, for example, top my head, and I'll just pull something out of the air. Say, for example, an improvement wants to be made to the way we, the way we, let me see. What would be a good example? Well, let's even take this gambling initiative, right? If we say anything related, now, this past gambling initiative proposed that there would be a convention center that would be built. Now, if somebody else came up with some kind of initiative that proposed to build a convention center without the component of gambling included, right, that whole initiative would have to be struck down because it's related. Or if somebody wanted to, say, for example, instead of a convention center, let's even get something a little bit further out, if somebody wanted to develop some kind of a cultural center, say, for example, which is exactly which, which would help the tourism industry on this island, right? But then the argument can be made that that's exactly, and it's related, to what the concept of that convention center was, right, which was to help the tourism industry. So there is a relationship in terms of the two concepts, even though one is tied to the gambling initiative as we've seen it, and the other one may not be tied to anything except for the permission and the initiative to go forth to build a cultural center. And so unless, it's, it's not substantially related, but it's related. And that's why I just want to identify that there is a technical flaw in this in terms of, you know, how you would read it legally, I would imagine. And so I'm not really sure if the good senator would want to address this at one time because I know that I cannot make an amendment to an amendment to an amendment. So.
You want to, you want to call one minute recess?
Can we take a one-minute recess? I think because we need to address this.
Yeah, thank you.
Right now. Thank you.
You guys weren't listening over there?
But what if we, but what if we have more?
It's in the rats, man. My money's in the rats.
Make my breath, that's not rats, that's my brooms. That's it.
But then what do you think, do you agree?
But I say step away from the four years, you just say, may I?
I get the lower, the lower.
Yeah.
Well, actually, it achieves the worst. Yeah.
Angels aren't even there?
No.
Oh.
The idea, not to, not to, except you can have, but you can't, I want to stand, it's pretty hard.
Oh, I understand, but if you should feel the taxes or...
But you want taxes, but you don't try to decide.
I mean, not, not, if you're, if you're going to be an initiative.
But you want it to be decided in a special election where you only have seventeen thousand people come out and vote?
No, no, no. I wanted to...
No, that's what you're saying, because...
That's what I'm saying. If you can apply, if people feel that initiative is broad.
No, but you said that... But I'm saying, you want seventeen thousand people to decide whether or not to raise taxes?
That's what the issue is. I don't think you should, sorry, you got that problem. Because, because, and I understand, because, basically, you're gonna be sitting, and I think, like, taking a measure, how was the tax, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't happen in a fair way.
I doubt, number one, I doubt the organized, after you pay taxes, you should know what I'm saying. Number two, I doubt any senator will put it on the ballot. At the same time, we're on the ballot. Just move it, but, but it goes against our argument.
You just gotta set them up, you're gonna change it, but you're not gonna vote for it anyway.
I mean, that's something that the legislators could decide, oh my god. And that's the problem, people are gonna...
No, but, 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 but this, this, the increased eligibility requirement, for, 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 for... My concern is...
To raise the artificial, you're saying naked, but that is probably a bad thing. More than sixty percent of...
No, 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 the eligibility.
Of eligibility, I thought, uh...
The order for it to be considered, you know, instead of... Yeah, not a bad idea. Raise it to twenty percent. What is it now, twenty percent, right? Raise it to, raise it to, uh, raise it to twenty percent.
But that's partially democracy, though.
But even that is tied to the number of people who voted in the last group natory election.
That's appreciation, pal.
The percentage of the... The percentage of the last, the voted in the last group natory election.
So then, the next one is the, the percentage, the percentage of the last people who voted last, the twenty percent of the percentage. I mean, it's not just the ten percent, it's still, it's always ten percent. Okay, what was the current grand office, this, 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 the last one? No, okay, I'm, I'm, my, my, my concern is not concerning that. My, 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 my concern is, is, is that I'm concerned about similar, I mean, I mean...
What does that mean?
You're messed up, you won't even live it.
The legislature is back in session. The last time we left off, Senator Gutters, you're recognized.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Speaker, you know, I've gone around and talked to a number of senators and solicited input and I want to withdraw the amendment I had made and...
Okay, there's a motion to withdraw any objection, no objection, so ordered. Senator Espishu, your amendment?
Thank you. I also want to withdraw the amendment I made.
No objection, so ordered. Senator Gutters, you're recognized. Both amendments have hereby been withdrawn.
Thank you very much. And, Mr. Speaker, just distributed our new amendments, and I'd like to go through them with my colleagues if I may.
Senator Gutters, we'll go by one amendment at a time.
Yes, thank you, sir. The First Amendment is G2. It's item G2 in the left-hand corner of your... G2. We'll start with G2.
Proceed, Senator Gutters.
Yes. G2 would change Section 2 of Bill 272 to read as follows. It would add a new section 17203.1.
Senator Gutters, Section 2 is... was deleted by Senator Penderlin's amendment, so Section 2 is now the... was formerly Section 3?
Yes. Yes. And the language would read as follows: "If an initiative measure is not approved by voters in any general election, no initiative measure proposing a substantially similar or substantially related subject shall be submitted to voters for at least four years after the date of such election." And 17203.2 would read as follows: "The Election Commission shall be responsible for determining whether an initiative measure proposes a substantially similar or substantially related subject of a previously defeated measure prior to circulation of said measure." That's the First Amendment, Ms. Chairman.
Senator Gutters, just hold on. On page 2, your G2 amendment is to replace on line 20 all the way down to line 23. I'm looking at the subsection, you know, so I just want to get clarity.
This would, Mr. Chairman, this would basically become...
Yeah, it's different.
I know. This would become the new Section 2.
So then that would eliminate line 20 to 23?
No, 15 to 19.
Well, Section 15 to 19 has already been deleted earlier.
Yes, so this would become a new 15 to 19.
Okay, new Section 2, and then Section 3?
Right.
We'll go back to Section 3, okay?
Right, right.
For clarity, on line 15, the old Section 2 is to be replaced by the G2 amendment that Senator Gutters is offering. Okay?
Okay, okay.
G2 amendment.
Right.
It's, you have to turn to the next page.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I know everybody's confused, but just, okay? Madam Clerk, so again, for information, it was table 1, G1, G2. We're going straight to G2, and G2 is going to be a new Section 2.
Yes.
Okay? And now, is it on the Gutters' G2 amendment? Senator Tenorio, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, such that it is, as my good colleague from Berengada has done on many occasions. I may not agree with it, but I'll try to make it better in the process. I'd like to amend, and I understand where we're going here. But I want to be clear. I don't want another law of unintended consequences. I don't want a situation where somebody reads it one way and somebody else reads it differently. I want to be clear. If we're going to do this, let's do it so we're not having every election cycle, general election, we're going to have an initiative. So I'm going to move to strike the word 4 and the number 4 on the third line and put 3 in place of it. So that it would say, "If an initiative measure is not approved by voters in any general election, no initiative measure proposing a substantially similar or substantially related subject shall be submitted to voters for at least three years after the date of such election." So there's no question, it's not going to be in the next general election ballot. It's going to go on the subsequent one. So, and that's due to be very clear, that it's not going to skip a general election because we have a four-year period here and says, you know, so I don't want to get into the math of it, and, you know, I've talked to legal counsel on both sides, and I think we're probably a little bit safer with 3, and you're not going to have to worry about it haunting you in the next general election cycle if that's your fear. So the motion is to replace the word 4 and the number 4 in parentheses with 3.
Thank you, Senator Tenorio. On Senator Tenorio's amendment to the amendment, is there any objection? No objection, so ordered. Senator Gutters, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next amendment is G1. Yeah, first page, G1, and this would become the new Section 3 of the bill.
Senator Gutters, this one. There was no objection. Right. Okay, Senator Tenorio's amendment to change it from four years to three years is passed now on the main amendment of Senator Gutters. Is there any objections to the main amendment? No objections, so ordered. Now we're back to G1. Senator Gutters, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Speaker, and colleagues. The next item is G1, and this would be basically replacing Section 3 of the bill to read as follows: "An initiative measure can only be placed in an island-wide general election other than a primary election, in which the election of the governor and lieutenant governor is on the ballot. The Election Commission shall submit the initiative to the electors after certification at the next general election held, at least 90 days after it qualifies."
Okay. Are there any objections? Yes, Senator?
Just a, I'm going to, point of clarification, a point of information from the author of the amendment. Most of the issues that we are dealing in this bill are as a result of, again, the gambling initiative that has been held over several years and several elections, and understanding, again, the rationale and the basis of this, and the spirit of trying to to kind of set parameters that if there's been an initiative defeated, that there won't be this constant renewal of this initiative process for something that's been defeated. But with this particular one, and I just wonder if we can look at in totality of what we are dealing with and the spirit of what we're dealing with, but then at the same time separate it with the initiative process. The way I read this is now we're talking about an initiative measure, whether it's been something regarding gambling or maybe the drinking age, or maybe some other initiative. It could be a political status, political status initiative in the future. What I see here is an amendment now that expands it, the basis for an initiative, even an initiative that is new in basically four-year increments. I'm concerned of whether this particular provision may have unintended consequences. As I had stated yesterday, you know, we are a representative democracy, yet we also have an initiative process in Guam, a U.S. territory similar to other communities in the United States, where we do have the exercise of direct democracy, which of course the United States of Guam is not. We are representative democracy, but we do have that process in place for direct democracy, which is the initiative process. This provision, and that's why I'm pausing a bit here, do we want to set certain limitations on the people of Guam, on those that have the right to vote and to start an initiative? Do we want to limit it in to a general election where a governor or lieutenant governor is being elected? Every two years, this body, or the people of Guam, go and vote and exercise their right to vote for a senator, not necessarily a governor or a mayor, but a senator. There is a two-year election cycle in this community, very similar to other communities in the United States. We have now, currently, even if we were to, if we take this provision out, if we take this provision out and we pass this bill as is, there will be the ability for the people of Guam through the petition process to launch an initiative. Now, I understand that in an off-gubernatorial term, the, and historical fact shows that we just do not have the the number of voters to come out and turn out for an election that is off-governatorial. Just take, for instance, we are, and I'm just going to throw something out, political status. The island of Guam is going through some very, very dynamic change over these next two, four, eight years. What if, and I'm just saying what if, what if in the future, and maybe it's not 2010, maybe it's 2012, there is desire, and let's say we're two years into the, this massive buildup of the U.S. military, there is such a fundamental and profound change in the direction of this community that there is a voice, and a strong voice that comes out from the people for an initiative and a referendum on, let's say, political status. If what I read and interpret in this particular provision, if it is indeed ratified by this body and passed into law, the only way for them to move, and let's say in 2011, for the people of Guam to move on an initiative process would be in the next general election where there is a governor and lieutenant governor to be decided, would be 2014. And I pose this question because we are dealing now with an issue, an issue that has had a profound impact on the community when it comes to defeated initiatives. We are now expanding that for not just defeated initiatives, but for initiatives put forward by the people of Guam that may be unique and may be the first time in its history. And that is why I'm having some serious reservations on this particular amendment. And this is maybe my interpretation of this amendment, and that's what I would like, maybe an explanation from the author of this amendment. Am I reading this thing differently, or is that the intention that we limit any initiative defeated or something new to a four-year period? And if that is the case, I do have some concerns, and I'm asking my colleagues, please think this thing out. We don't want to focus in a problem that may have, we be, may be so important to us as a community, but it's just that one issue, and we make a decision that may have repercussions that we may not think about in the future.
Senator Gutters, you, you?
I have a point of information, Mr. Speaker.
Again, I'm requesting if the senator, if what my interpretation isn't true, is true, and if so, you know, again, I want her to think about this and the ramifications, potential ramifications of this provision.
Yes. Senator Tenorio, state your point of information.
Just a point of information before the good lady responds. The added section, which was amended by the committee, which substituted the Bill 272, already has a substantially identical portion, which reads, "An initiative measure can only be placed in an island-wide general election other than a primary election, in which the election of the governor and lieutenant governor is on the ballot." That's just for the body's information. So I think the effect of what she's doing is already in the bill.
Yes, that's basically, if I may just answer according to legal counsel, or if you care, is the, it's just substantially the same amendment. It's only been put into the current code. Okay, so Senator?
Okay, then if I can continue, please. If it's already in the bill, and again, my apologies, I had, I have been indisposed in my conference room. I really would like to work with our colleagues. If we have an issue, we have a problem, and we are dealing with it as a legislative body, and it deals with something so fundamental to a democracy, and to solve one problem and maybe opening up a potential consequence that we may not be thinking about at this point, and again, if that is the case, if this is just a provision that is already, even whether passed or not, if this is already a provision in the current bill as is, I'm very concerned. I understand where we are going on, again, in regards to the issue of defeated initiatives, but I caution this body that we cannot, we have to take seriously our role as senators and the way we craft this legislation. Do we want to restrict the initiative process that right at this time is more open-ended and now move it towards a four-year period? And again, I have some serious reservations. I would like to work with the authors of the bill, because I want to move forward in this bill, and I think the intent is, well, is desirable, but I don't want to expand on the desired intent of the bill, and that is to restrict the initiative process. I have some major concerns in restricting the initiative process and allowing the people of Guam to exercise a bit of direct democracy. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Senator, you still want the author of the amendment to yield to you? Okay, Senator Gutters, here.
Thank you very much, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. You know, it's interesting, the interpretation of my colleague is that this is restrictive. To me, what this does is this ensures wider voter participation in the initiative process at a time when we get the largest voter turnout on the island, which is in the gubernatorial elections. If you look at the statistics of voter turnout in non-gubernatorial elections, it is much lower. Maximum citizens' participation in our island democracy manifests itself during gubernatorial elections. So if you were going to have, let's say, an initiative or referendum on political status, the most ideal time to do that would be during a gubernatorial election, when our voter turnout would be very high, rather than during... when our voter turnout would be very high, rather than during a non-gubernatorial election or during a special election. Look at the statistics, it's demonstrated over and over again. During special elections, during non-governatorial elections, the voter turnout is not as high as it is during gubernatorial elections. So I look at this provision as an enhancement rather than a restriction, so that those questions that come before the people will have the widest public participation in determination of whether or not the proposals are acceptable by the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Gattis. Anybody else want to speak on? Senator Pangilina?
Maybe we should just wait till Senator, I would like to explain it, but since Senator Koval is the one who has a question, I'd like for him to be here so that he can hear my explanation.
Sure. No other problem. Take a one-second recess. Legislative's back in session. Senator Pangilina, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I wanted to speak on this because it was something that I had proposed and articulated and the rationale behind the thinking of doing this. And it is understood, and I think Senator Koval's interpretation, or I don't think, I know that Senator Koval's interpretation is correct, that initiatives would only be submitted to the voters for voting in a gubernatorial year election. So it does mean that in non-governatorial year elections, initiatives are not allowed on the ballot. And that is different from the current requirement, is that you can put them on the ballot anytime, right now. And the rationale is just that, as articulated by the retiring speaker, is that, you know, initiatives are supposed to be the will of the majority. And how do you get, you know, the widest participation to ensure that it is a majority, that you get the largest number of individuals presented to them? And this idea that, you know, that as he says, that we may not be able to present initiatives in non-governatorial year may be more restrictive. But it is, initiatives, as he had mentioned, although they exist in the Guam code and authorization in the Organic Act to petition the government, there are other avenues to petition the government here on Guam. And it may not be that hard to have somebody out of this 15-member body introduce something that a whole bunch of people want, that we can't get on board. We've seen that happen. So in other states, as mentioned in discussions earlier, not every state constitution allows initiatives. As a matter of fact, the minority of, less than half the states, allow initiatives on their ballot. And let's take a look at what's happened with regards to, let's say, California. I mean, I think there was 56 or 106 propositions on the ballot this time around. And so it makes it so that, you know, just, it's not a wide dispersion. It becomes too confined to special interests and rather than community interests. And so by allowing it to still be placed on ballots, but providing that the time that that is done is when you have, from historical data, the largest participation, it actually gives initiatives better chance to pass because of the Santos Amendment and so forth. So you have more opportunity to convince the general public to act affirmatively on your petition. So it doesn't do that. If there is something so compelling that, you know, it has to go to the people, there's nothing to restrict this body through, and this body has provided, such as the Voter Introduction Bill and other mechanisms to allow placement on the ballot, such as legislative initiatives, that can be, as we have done in the past, say, you know, regardless, or the famous notwithstanding clause, when it's of such a compelling public interest, that a notwithstanding can be, you can place initiatives in a non-governatorial year if it's so urgent and emergent that we do so in a non-governatorial year. And we've done, we did that, Mr. Speaker, I mean, in budgets, for example. We have a law that says no tax, no fee can be increased without going to the people and being submitted to the people. And that is the right of the people that we have vested to them through action in this body. And yet this body has continually ignored that. It hasn't repealed the law, it's just decided that through an action of this body, we're not going to follow that law. So rather than saying, without action of this body, we're not going to follow that law, we're saying that we're gonna restrict or the time of when it can be put. And if there's something so compelling, then I think members of this body may waive that requirement and place it in a non-governatorial year. But as a general operation of the democracy in our community, that this community decides that it wants to ensure that you have the largest participation in an election year. And we're already doing it with initiatives that lose. We're saying you can't come back for four. If we're comfortable with doing that, why aren't we comfortable with just saying any initiative is, you know, is subject to that four-year time limitation? And so to say that it's okay to restrict it to four if it's been voted on, but if it's new, we want to be able to do it every year? I mean, again, it's kind of like, you can't have it both ways. And so in that regard, understanding that the good senator's interpretation is correct, and he may differ, which he has voiced, and that's fine. And that's gonna come down in terms of, you know, what's the majority will on this. And we could vote on this when there's eight of us in the room, or we could vote on it when there's 15 of us in the room. I say, like initiatives, we should vote when there's 15 in the room, just as bills that we vote when there's 15 in the room, because we want to have the greatest expression of the majority to be able to vote on that bill. So in that respect, Mr. Speaker, that's the same rationale and theory behind this. So I thank my good colleagues for listening to that and would respect their decision in how they act, they vote on this amendment. But again, it's the same reason why we try to make sure that when we vote on the bill, we get everybody here, because we want it to be the expression of everyone that has that right to vote. And it's the same way with regards to initiatives, that we want to do it when we have the greatest majority available, over and beyond the 50 plus one, to participate in that process. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Pangilina. Senator Tenor, you're recognized again.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I echo the sentiments of my good colleague from Mitie, and these are the same sentiments I've expressed on a different issue yesterday with regards to how often we do it, limiting it to gubernatorial elections. And I had a kind of a thought that I was gonna speak on in the general bill, but I'll just share those sentiments now. Democracy is the ability to choose. That is the core of our nation, the core of this island, the ability to be able to make a statement by virtue of circling in and darkening in an oval right next to an option which appears on a piece of paper or electronic format. That is the basis for which we choose. You, we choose whether to opt or not opt in for a proposal. That's the freedom that our sons and daughters fight for every single day in Iraq and Afghanistan and other places around our nation to keep us safe. These are the principles of democracy, the choose. How do we choose is up to this body and our constitution, our Organic Act. Our Organic Act, and I've said this yesterday, says the initiative process. And, you know, there's no reason to reiterate those sections of the Organic Act. But the point is that the people have the ability to go through a pure democracy, those to make their choices in what is and is not going to be the policy of this island. How are we going to do that is our choice. How we dictate that is in accordance to the conditions in which are stipulated in the Organic Act is by virtue of law. But the purpose, and let's call it spade a spade, Mr. Speaker, the purpose of this is to make sure that we don't have redundant matters coming before the electorate and the cost associated with that. That's the genesis of this bill. That's the core legislative intent, that we don't want these things coming back to us and to affect this community in a negative way, in things that have been decided on in the past. And that's why in the previous section, which talked about not having that initiative, which has failed, come before the body or before the people within three years, gives you that window. So you're not gonna have it in the next general election. It's not gonna be a nuisance, a harassment, an expense, a necessary, unnecessary problem within this community, because if they say no, they say no. And that's what those proponents of this bill have said. We have said no, not once, not twice, not three times, four times. This community has stated no. So it's clear. Now, that's the reason for this. So now we're gonna say all initiatives are gonna be silenced, only because you need to have a general election in a gubernatorial year where you get maximum participation. You know, other island issues, Mr. Speaker, are selected in those non-governatorial years. As a matter of fact, you and I, we all just went through one. So are we saying that the island should not decide matters that deal with their entire island, with this legislature, until you have maximum participation? That the senator should not be chosen every two years? That they should be only chosen in a gubernatorial year? So we make sure that you get a full representation of all the electorate to the maximum degree you can? I don't think so. But if that's the choice of the body, then fine. I think, Mr. Speaker, that what we're doing here is tantamount to silencing those people who have an initiative, who has not been heard, and only doing it every four years is the same thing as I said yesterday, which is calming, quieting, muting, diluting that initiative process to a point that it is no longer that pure democracy which we are allowed to do by virtue of Guam's constitution, our Organic Act. It is in fact quieting that process. If you want to fix an ill, again echoing the sentiments of my colleague from Mitie, do it. But let's not confine our initiatives only to when we get maximum participation. One more thing, Mr. Speaker, Guam's very fortunate. Even in non-governatorial years, we have a sizable turnout in our electorate. We get a pretty good number of people coming out versus other communities. And we're a small island. We're not talking about not having an initiative process every four years because we want to make sure that we get everybody and their brother to come out and vote. Of course, we want to get maximum possible participation, but we have a system that's set up. An initiative rejected, let's not hear it for three years. Let's give people an opportunity to rethink, retool, and if they want to put another initiative, come to in the next four years. But you don't have to get the gubernatorial year and silence those people within our community for four years before they can initiate anything on their own. So, Mr. Speaker, we already have an embedded portion of this bill that has the gubernatorial years, which I don't like, and I've said so, and really have serious concerns about, as I do with this. But this is just as onerous as that one is. So, Mr. Speaker, I do not approve and I object to this amendment.
Thank you, Senator Tenor. Senator Respichu, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I'm trying to follow the arguments for this amendment, which I concur with. I'm trying to follow the arguments against this amendment, which I have to admit I've been fascinated. On one hand, you know, really, the whole genesis of this idea is to put an initiative out where there's greater voter participation. Nothing wrong with that. Greater voter participation so that you ensure that whatever, whenever, if ever that initiative is passed, it truly reflects the will of the majority, and at the same time, we protect the rights of the minority. And how do we do that? How do we protect the rights of the minority? By making sure that special interest-funded initiatives does not rule the day. You know, if you look at what's happened to our own election laws over the years, we're first, in the primary election in 2006, where a change to the primary election law was made to say that when one party doesn't have enough candidates to fill all the number of candidates available, then that party shall not have an election. So what happens? That party jumps over and participates in the other party's election, trying to skew the outcome of the will of the people of that particular political party. And then the next thing you had, where there was a change under the guise of austerity and wanting to save money for the government of Guam, that other party went and eliminated the election day holiday, even after the Guam Election Commission said, "Government of Guam, governor of Guam, speaker of the legislature, members of the legislature, we need your help in order to ensure fair and free elections. We need your help. We need staffing." And most of our volunteers come from GovGuam employees. We saw that in the 2006 gubernatorial general election that the Election Commission almost could not run the election because they didn't have the volunteer precinct officials show up that day. They were scrambling. They were scrambling, Mr. Speaker, because they couldn't get enough buses to bus the ballots from the various precincts up to the University of Guam. They were scrambling. They were scrambling and scrambling and scrambling, and it was organized chaos. It was organized chaos because one party believes that if you make it more difficult for people to go out and vote, the more people that vote on this island, more than likely, are gonna vote Democrat, because there's more Democrats registered than there are Republicans. That's a fact. I'm not being partisan, I'm not being political, I'm just giving a statement of fact. And then we hear our colleagues stand up and say, "Why not have an initiative at any time, any place, so you ensure that the will of the people is carried out?" Won the special election of this year, Mr. Speaker, the will of the people should have been carried out when a Democrat was elected to fill the big void left by the late Speaker Tony Amptinko. A Democrat won. We were 7-7. A Democrat got elected. Did our friends on the other side said, "Let's be gentlemen and cordial about this. Let's make the will of the people happen, and let's have a legislature that reflects that will." What happened, Mr. Speaker? We had three months of trying to convince our colleagues that eight is more than seven. Eight is more than seven. Absolutely, he better allow this. Because I'm trying to convey how, on one hand, we argue that we have to carry out the will of the majority, but only when it suits my convenience, only when I'm not gonna have to give up my big committee budget, only when I'm not gonna have to lay off my committee staff. If it were convenient for me to carry out the will of the people, then I would carry out the will of the people. But if it's gonna hurt me, if it's gonna hurt my legislative operations, seven is more than eight, and you cannot change that. Mr. Speaker, I was embarrassed to have participated in a legislative process where we had to assert our right to the majority. But we were gentlemen about it, and we agreed that we would just have a legislature that reflects the leadership of our party. So we had the Speaker, Speaker Wampat was selected. We had yourself, Mr. Speaker, you were selected as vice speaker. And Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes was selected as a legislative secretary. And myself, obviously, as the majority leader, because at least the standing rules was clear that if you have more members on one side than you have on the other, then the party with most members shall have a right to having a majority leader. But we didn't want to go further than that. We didn't want to go and say, "We now have to take over the committees." Rightfully, we could have, in retrospect, probably we should have, but we didn't want to go as far and have... to go as far and have this kind of struggle prolonged any more than what we believe our people could have handled. We didn't want to do that, so we did not do that. Now, we have a situation where in the last four general elections, and even the court has ruled that in the special election is considered a general election, we had this initiative come up, whether or not our people should have casino gaming. It's a very polarizing issue, Mr. Speaker, one that has torn our community apart. You had proponents of this measure going and praying on those people, the most vulnerable members of our community, to expose themselves and make them believe that this would be good for Guam. And then you had the other side, who worked tirelessly to defeat that initiative. And I commend both sides of any issue for bringing anything forward in this kind of democratic society that we have. But at some point, we need to say, "No means no means no means no," and we need to begin to heal this community, to look for other alternatives, especially from the side whose brains were ingrained that this is the only way we can revitalize our economy, and this is the only way we can, you know, improve our economic condition here. We need to heal our community, roll up our sleeves, and figure out how are we going to do this without having to track other social ills. So the amendment that Senator Guthers is putting forward does not restrict initiatives from coming before the people, but rather, it ensures that when initiatives are presented to the people, that we have the greatest number of people participating. What's wrong with that? One group who recognizes that we want the will of the people to be expressed and implemented, I have no objections to this amendment, Mr. Speaker, but to go against an amendment that would want to have initiatives, and I'll tell you, the right to an initiative is a right given by the legislature. And so the legislature, as in other jurisdictions, has set up those parameters by which these initiatives can be presented. It's not unprecedented that we're providing some kind of boundary or framework to do this. Many other jurisdictions have done so. We argued, not only is the issue tear our community apart, we argued that there's a lot of money involved from both sides who present these initiatives to the people, especially, Mr. Speaker, from the government of Guam's side, the taxpayers' side, where they have to prepare all these pamphlets and things like that. So let's just consider the Guthers amendment. Let's just consider the fact that if you want to be a member of a legislative body that would stand up against special interests, whether it's through the initiative process or through finding its way through this legislative hole, this is exactly one way to do it, to pass this amendment and to require that these initiatives are put before the people whenever you have the greatest number of people participating. Senator Cruz's statistics that he presented, out of 50,000 registered voters in 2008, in the special election of 2008, 9,000 people decided who's going to fill that vacancy. And so, Mr. Speaker, I implore our members to really consider how crucial this amendment will be to promoting what the wishes of majority is, but protecting the rights of the minority. And I certainly rise in full support of what Senator Guthers is attempting to do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments on the Guthers amendment? She pocked at the amendment. You'll be the last speaker. And if there's no objection on the group, then...
No, I'm moving on.
Yeah, Mr. Speaker, I would just request that we vote on the amendment.
Okay. There is, I noted two objections even earlier, but I was going to say was after we deal with this, we have a recess and then come back. That's exactly what... Okay, on the Guthers amendment, all those in favor, raise your hand. The motion failed. Senator Respichu?
I move to reconsider the actions of the body, but prior to that, I'd like to recess till 2:00.
Okay. No objection? There will be a recess till 2:00. Okay? Thank you.
I could fly down the street, but I can't keep up with Rick Tenor. Can you see the way that this guy drives?
I, I, I know. I do not know.
You know? He still thinks he's in the patrol car because flying in the...
What? I'm telling you. It's just a...
Right, right? The way he drives down the street, you'd think that he was in a patrol car.
Oh, right.
Yeah, you do. He has more power in his car. It's not that he's going to, he doesn't run over the island, but...
The heel of each other. Heels. What is this next thing?
Oh, he's definitely trying to get a light to wait.
Stop. Hurry, get him, get through it.
I don't have family that needs me for this. I have no family, it's only me. What difference does he want to go for? I'm not going to be chairman of the parliament and have to figure out whether or not I'm going to fire his Nina.
You're the chair of the...
Who should have been fired since years ago.
You're the chair of the...
Why do anybody who are a president... When the receipt is going to be announced next month? What do you mean?
We're at the last meeting.
Does Elena send you an email? Because her office called me and wanted my email, but I just because Elena wants to send me an email, but I haven't gotten it yet.
I don't know how to pump, I'll listen now, but I'm convinced, I'd much rather have a bad feeling actually too, than to treat old idols changed around.
I completely lost track of the story now.
Is there a way to get a looking at current rules?
Yes, just ask them.
I think it's all the way.
Legislature is back in session. The last time we went, it was Senator Respichu. He also made a motion for reconsideration. No, not to, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I will withdraw my reconsideration until we get another member present.
Okay. Senator Guthers?
Yes, Ms. Chairman, and as you know, I had one more amendment to make, and that is called G3. And this would add a new section, this would be a new section to the bill. Section 17204. And it basically says, "An initiative must be approved by 50% plus one of all voters who go to the polls to vote in the general election at which the initiative was placed on the ballot. Any initiative so approved by 50% plus one of all voters who go to the polls to vote at said election shall take effect 60 days after the date on which the commission certifies that the initiative has been passed." Basically, the change here takes out the word "special" or...
Okay, go ahead. Proceed.
Yes, Ms. Chairman, I've...
I know you've done that, but what I'm trying to talk with the clerk is that you're putting in, under a new section...
17204.
No, no, but that's the subsection. But on the bill...
At amend section 17204, Title III of Guam Code Annotated.
So this is a new section?
It's an amendment to the current section of the current law, the Guam Code Annotated.
No, under your bill, we've deleted section two, so section three became section two.
Yeah.
Okay, and then, no, I'm going further. And then further, you have a G3. Now, that would have to go into a certain section within this bill. So what section would you have? The section two? A new section two?
Would it just, a new section? It would be a new section added to the bill.
Okay, well, I'm looking at your amendment here.
Yes.
It just says here, it didn't say a new section, it just says to amend section 17204, Title III, Guam Code Annotated.
Yes.
It would be a section three? No? Okay. So it would be section four?
Section four.
I want to make sure.
Yes, Ms. Chairman.
Okay, so you're having a new section four, which is to amend subsection 17204. Is that clear with everybody?
Yes.
Okay. So her motion, is there any objection to her? Senator Tenor, you're recognized.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Speaker, we're again deviating from the original intent of the bill. It seems, you know, we started out with this bill as substituted, which was accepted, and had two sections. Now it looks like we're rewriting the code in its entirety. We've already said, in the section that deals prior, the new section is recommended by the committee that an initiative measure can only be placed in island-wide general election. And this section takes out the special or general election. So are we, how much further are we going to, how much more are we going to deviate from the original bill? We started down the road of saying we've had too much of this Prop. 8, and we're not going to have anymore. That's the bottom line. No means no means no means no. Now, how much further are we going to go down before having the public input on all these revisions? It seems to me that, again, we are embarking down a road which deals with initiatives, and we're expanding the horizon and scope of this point to be infinite. I'm just really curious, going from the redundancy issue that was brought up in the original bill about not wanting to have this heard over and over again by placing a piece of legislation in here that says, "If it's been rejected, then it can be heard for three years. Then you can hear it again," that basically gives you a four-year period. Then we have this other section that deals with, it has to be placed on the ballot only when a governor and lieutenant governor are on. Now we're saying it can be placed on a special election. How much further are we going to deviate from the intent of the bill?
Point of information, Ms. Chairman.
Will you use the point of information?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. All this is doing is amending an existing provision in the election code to make sure... to make sure that it is consistent with the previous amendments. All this, this is existing law already. All we're doing is taking out the word "special" or from existing law. That's all. Thank you, Ms. Chairman, Mr. Speaker.
Okay.
Mr. Speaker, I, I can read the section. I don't need it to be read to me.
Proceed.
All right. Um, there's a point to be made, and I'll make it one more time, and then I'll sit down. We started off with the tenet that the people of Guam had been confronted with a proposal which was rejected, and rejected, and rejected. So then, we went down another road, saying, "Well, we're not going to allow individuals to have initiatives at any time except during gubernatorial elections." I don't necessarily agree with that as well. Then, we add the other, well, which was rejected, but that notwithstanding, another amendment that talked about the general and special election, again, continuing to widen the scope. I just, I just think that we have a purpose here, we should fulfill the purpose. The purpose was to say, "We don't want to have redundant measures placed before the, before the people that have been rejected." Um, I think we've accomplished that. We're sort of beating a dead horse at this point, and I wonder at what stage we're gonna end.
Thank you, Santanora. Senator Calvo.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, again, I see consistency with this amendment offered by our Senator Guthers in regards to, again, the issue we had brought forward in the original bill and its intent, where we have these onerous situation with, placed upon our voters, taxpayers, for defeated measures and initiatives, and, and having some sort of, of a process so there is a defeat in an initiative, we don't have to go through it every time there's an election. And this, this particular amendment is, is consistent with that, but I go back to the statements I made earlier and before lunch. Look at this bill, look at the original legislative findings and intent. Look at the testimony that was provided in the hearings for this bill, where we focus on an issue, an issue again on defeated initiatives. The bill has evolved. It has evolved to encompass the initiative process. The initiative process, not only for defeated initiatives, for any initiative. There was no bill introduced, for all the testimony that was provided in that public hearing, I don't recall any testimony regarding to the whole initiative process. There was concerns about the gambling initiative, and how it would come about time and time again, and how much money was being spent on, on the initiative, and how much, again, it, the, the community was polarized with such a contentious issue. This bill has evolved, and has evolved to be a substantive change from the original concept of the bill. Mr. Speaker, I would be in favor and vote for a bill based on the original intent, but as it has now, and as I mentioned earlier, it has made a profound change and has expanded the scope for what, actually, if you read the legislative findings intent, the legislature finds that the people of Guam have been granted the right to pass laws through the initiative process. The people of Guam shall have the right of initiative and referendum to be exercised under conditions and procedures specified by the laws of Guam. Further, people of Guam have exercised their right of initiative on numerous occasions and with numerous, numerous subjects. Further, there's been found that the legalization of gambling in Guam has been subject to several initiatives, specifically those submitted to the voters of Guam in ninety-six, two thousand four, two thousand six, and two thousand eight, and all of them rejected by the voters. As the tour of Guam finds that the right of initiative is an essential and important right, it is not absolute. The legislature finds that the initiative measures having similar or related subjects that are presented to voters in consecutive elections and which have been rejected in those elections impose considerable cost and expense to the government of Guam, the Guam Election Commission, to the island's residents. The costs are excessive and burdensome, including the costs associated in the presentation of the initiatives, the conduct of elections, voter information, election campaign and debate, legal and judicial resources expended, and initiative measures. Further, the legislature finds that Pennsylvania, Utah, Mississippi, Alaska, Wyoming have also prescribed certain conditions for presentation of initiative measures in order to prevent burdensome costs associated with redundant initiative measures. It is therefore the intent of this legislature to provide for certain conditions relating to the presentation of initiative measures within similar or related subjects that have been submitted to and rejected by the voters in previous elections. That was what this bill was all about. Mr. Speaker, I mentioned it again, unintended consequences. I can't read the future, but if we are going to expand from this legislation, and expand it especially, especially when it comes with the values that are so important in a democracy, I think it needs to be done in an open and transparent manner. There needs to be entr, legislation introduced with a public hearing, bring the public in here, so that we can examine the potentiality of the passage of such a measure. And where now, the people, the voters' right for direct representation in the creation of laws that they will soon abide by, that the people of this island are given the opportunity to speak on this matter. Mr. Speaker, I'm not gonna object to this amendment. This amendment is in line with the original intent of the bill. You take out the special election, obviously. But this bill is much, much more than that. This bill, as is written, does not change the procedures for how defeated initiatives will be brought forward to the people of Guam. It changes the very initiative process itself. And I think that is something that is so, so sacred in a democracy that it can't be done through an amendment by the, and you're right, Senator, maybe there's only eight people in a room, or fifteen people in a room. But I feel much more comfortable, whether it's eight or fifteen, if we're going to make a change of this, this magnitude, that it be introduced separately, and we have a public hearing. And again, this is, I'm speaking on this amendment. When my time comes to speak on the bill later on, I will try to, to make an amendment to focus back on what the true purpose and the true legislative intent of this bill was. And when that time comes, I'm hoping that we can put, have, put some deep thought into where we're moving. And hopefully, there will be a change of course, of the course of this particular bill. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Calvo. Are there any other speakers on G2, or, wait. That's the G3 amendment by Senator Guthers. If there's none, no other speakers, Senator Guthers, you got the last person to speak on this amendment?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Speaker. I'm pleased that my colleague recognizes that this last amendment simply corrects an existing provision in the election code so that it is consistent with the intent of the bill. Thank you.
On the Guthers amendment, known as G3, there has been some objections, so all those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven. No, I'm, I'm voting. No, there's only seven. So we got seven? Okay, one more time, all those in favor of the bill, please raise your right hand. Clerk, can we get a accurate count? The, excuse me, the amendment, Guthers G3 amendment. It passes. On the, are there any other amendments to be proctored? Okay. We go back now to the main bill. Bill two seven two as amended. Senator Guthers?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and colleagues.
I'm sorry.
Excuse me.
Mr. Speaker, is this a closing?
No, she's starting off now on the main, the main bill.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. We've had quite a discussion on this particular bill, and I want to thank all of the colleagues here for participating and expressing themselves and giving input. I think it's important that we, as a legislature, recognize the sentiments of the community that has been expressed on various matters of recent action. And I think all of us in this hall have been approached repeatedly by people saying, "How many more times do we have to consider certain things?" For them to get our, our feelings that we don't want this in our community. So we are taking our cues from the people, and we are representing the people in considering this bill. It's a simple bill. I know some in this hall may wish to interpret it in different ways, but I think at this point in time, it's important for us to recognize the importance of setting down the proper approach to the initiative process and maximizing, maximizing the opportunities for people to express themselves on issues of importance to them. One minute recess. There's a request for a minute recess, Mr. Speaker.
Yeah. Senator Guthers, you just let me, there is a request for recess. You have, you have the floor.
Uh, may I request a moment's recess, Mr. Speaker?
...
[inaudible] 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 Okay, Mr. Speaker, if you're ready.
Out of recess, Senator Gutterz, you're recognized.
Thank, uh, thank you, Mr. Speaker. The matter's been resolved, so we may continue with the closing. And I just want to close by saying that, you know, it's time for us to act, and I'm hoping my colleagues will see the wisdom of doing so. And I want to thank all of them for their participation in moving forward with this particular bill. Thank you very much. For me, for me.
Senator Gutterz, you're talking on the bill. Okay, so is there any other members of the body who wish to speak on the main motion of Bill 272 as amended? Okay, who wants to go first?
Yeah, Mr. Speaker.
Senator Cavill, you're recognized.
Thank you. As I mentioned earlier, I would like to make an amendment to the bill. Again, I've been, because there have been numerous changes, I've requested from the clerk, if we can get, in order to make the amendment, I need to have the, the most up-to-date copy of the, of the bill that has evolved in, in quite a substantive form. So again, I, I found that Senator Tenorio may be wishing to speak in this matter, and if I, if I could please reserve...
Yeah, so then we'll go ahead and allow Senator, but it would take a recess for you to get all your ducks in order. Senator Tenorio, while we're waiting for Senator Cavill, on the motion.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I am going to once more attempt to find a common ground, and as the good Senator from Mitie and I have articulated in our previous comments, to try to, you know, meet us halfway. Because I understand, I understand the initiative process, I understand the issues, I understand what is before us versus what we started out with. What we started out with was, we, the people of Guam, don't want to continually be bombarded by issues that we have already rejected in a previous election, special or general. So there's a, there's a provision that we agreed. I even said, okay, let's go and say three years. Three years. You can't have the same initiative after it's been rejected for three years. So that means you have to wait a minimum of three years before you even consider anything that has already been rejected by the people of Guam. All right. So what happens then? You say, "We're going to put it on the general election," which is the Section 3, at least of the, the substitute bill, which reads that "An initiative measure can only be placed in an island-wide general election, other than a primary election, in which the election of the governor and lieutenant governor is on the ballot." That, to me, is the problematic portion of this bill, at least in the form that I see it in front of me. And that is what I think, I think many of my, my colleagues have a problem with as well. The initiative process, it doesn't just happen every four years. It shouldn't just happen every four years. Because issues, whether you're dealing with native rights issues, whether you're dealing with fishing issues, whether you're dealing with election issues, tax issues, whether you're dealing with the right to drink at 18 or 21, any given variety of issues can be addressed at any point in time. But we're saying that my, my concern is, why do you only have it in a gubernatorial election year? Because you have to have, or you desire to have the greatest number of voters? Of course. But does that stagnate the initiative process, or should that be the trigger to stagnate or to silence the voice of peoples who want to put policies before the people? I don't think so. I really don't. I don't agree that you have to have a gubernatorial election to get the maximum participation. Now, if you want to say that it has to be a general election wherein the governor or the mayors are elected, then fine. You don't do a special election, fine. I'm okay with that even. But to say that you can do it only four years just seems problematic. Because as an individual, if I want to affect policy, I have to go get the requisite number of signatures from all of our community. We have to get, what is it? The number is 750, is it? How many? I think 750. I, I, I don't know. It, it's a substantial number of signatures from, from people in this community who are voters. Then the Guam Election Commission has to certify that those are in fact registered voters who signed off on the petition. The process is there. Why do I have a bar in front of me to keep me from voting on the next general election, which doesn't happen to be a general election for the governor and lieutenant governor? Why do I have to wait four years for my policy to be considered or anybody else's policy to be considered? I think that is going to be the stumbling block of this piece of legislation. I think that is going to be the Achilles' heel of this particular bill. I really do. And if this body believes, and this, the, the majority of this body is sufficient, to carry that message, that stopping the people from having an initiative put before them only in the time of a gubernatorial election, then we'll see if our governor signs off on it. I don't think, I don't, you know, I, I can't second-guess the governor, but I can predict if you have eight votes to carry it, you're probably not going to get more than that in the veto. Because I personally, I think there's a fundamental thing here. We want to accomplish something. We don't want to berate, harass, and, and create a nuisance for our population by repeatedly confronting them with issues. Fine. Let's put and keep the restriction of the three-year initiative in place. But I'm asking my colleagues to consider one thing. Leaving the initiative, or the three-year bar to, to an initiative in place, and then striking the Section 3 of the substitute bill, which reads 17202.2, a new section, which makes it require that any, any initiative only occur in the governor and lieutenant So I understand it's, it's the, it's the existing Section 2 of the bill, I'm sorry. Thank you. I, I thank my colleague from Mitie for this. This is the, the new section, basically, to be deleted then would be Section 2 in its entirety, which deals with 17202.2. And that, again, is the, the portion that reads, "An initiative measure can only be placed in an island-wide general election, other than a primary election, in which the election of the governor and lieutenant governor is on the ballot." Really, I'm asking my colleagues, let's not torpedo this. Let's not, let's do what we intended to do in the first place. If that is the intent of the body, then let's do that. Let's not mar this process. Let's not set this thing up for failure because we want to put it in, in election only when you can get, you know, 10% more of the population voting. Because if the sentiments of the people are that 40% do not support a measure, and 60% do support the measure, whether you get 60% of that population, or 70% of that population, or 85% of that population, you're still going to find that 40% do not support that proposal, and 60% do. It's not a matter of what, you're, you're, you're dealing with fudge factors here. And maybe I'm wrong, but it's been pretty clear that the initiative which is in question here, the real topic of this discussion, you know, not wanting to be, going through repeated redundant processes of initiatives which have been defeated in prior elections being put before the people, let's deal with that. Let's deal with that issue. And leave the rest of it, because I think we've set up a sufficient system with a three-year limit on that initiative to be able to keep it from being a problem. I think that's fair. So I'm asking my colleagues to delete what is not, section, the proposed new Section 17202.2, which is the current Section 2 of the heretofore engrossed bill. Mr. Speaker.
Okay, Senator Cavill, on the Tenorio amendment.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I won't need to make an amendment then. That is exactly the intent of my amendment. When I was to have the floor, I rise in support of it. Again, for the men, the, the reasons I mentioned earlier, let's focus this bill on, on the true legislative findings and intent. And this simple amendment that is offered by Senator Tenorio would, would, would focus, again, on the issue of the original bill and how it was conceived. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
You're very welcome. Any other speakers on the Tenorio amendment? Tenorio amendment is delete Section 2 in its entirety. Which is on line 20 to 23. Okay, there is an objection. Senator Gutterz, she wants to speak.
I believe that amendment would just defeat the whole purpose of the bill. Thank you.
Any other speakers on the Tenorio amendment? There being none, yet Senator Espaldón.
I just wanted to say that, again, the previous speaker said that that amendment would defeat the purpose of the bill. I would, at this point in time, have to say that I disagree with that statement. I think it's been made clear by the colleagues who, my colleagues who have voiced support for not, for initiatives that have gone before the voters and have been defeated not to have come back to further be in front of the voters at every election. I think that was the primary intent of the bill. It's not, I think, I don't think the primary intent of the bill was to so much change the initiative from having anybody introduce and an initiative from two years to four years or, you know, over a four-year term. So again, I just want to make that clarification that I don't believe that the initial intent and the main intent of this bill was to change the ability of an initiative to be introduced every two years. I believe the intent of this, of this legislation, I think as it's written, is to, is to make sure that those initiatives that have been introduced and have been voted upon and have been defeated don't keep coming back every, every time. And so again, I would have to disagree with that statement. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
You're welcome. Any other speaker on the Tenorio amendment to delete section two in its entirety?
Mr. Speaker, if I may ask just for one minute recess because we're just now looking at the engrossed bill with all the amendments to it. So when we start talking about section two and we're looking at the old bill, section two in that initial measure has already been deleted and there have been a lot of changes. So if we can just take one minute to take the engrossed bill? Thank you.
But if I'm not mistaken, section two was the amendment made by Senator Guthers, the new section two? No, you, the amendment, no, engrossed bill. It's the amendment that was made, Senator Guthers.
You're making copies of the new?
You're making copies of the new?
So maybe you wanted to read section two?
So four, basing it four years?
I think we're done. Do you mean you're done?
I don't have the floor. I just, I just wanted to bring up the point of recess.
Is there a possibility that, and I feel that you could say, okay, this thing passes, but this is only going to apply to any initiative or four?
Sessions back in order. When we went to the break, everyone received a copy of the engrossed version. And I'm gonna go back to Senator Ray Tenorio. You're acknowledged. Okay, before we do the closing, did anybody else want to speak on the Ray Tenorio amendment? Right, I apologize. Senator Espaldon did call for the recess.
Yes, Madam Speaker. Actually, the only reason I called for the recess was to get a copy in each of our hands so we're all talking about the same page and the same section number. And I'm satisfied that now that we have all the, everybody has their copy of the engrossed bill. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Espaldon. With that being said, anybody else on the Tenorio amendment? Senator Guthers, did you want to speak on the amendment? She already spoke. Okay. On the Tenorio amendment, delete section two in its entirety, there was an objection on the floor. All those in favor signify by raising your right, your hand. Motion fails. On the main motion, anybody else want to speak on the main motion? If not, Senator Guthers, you can, wait, hold on. Senator Frank Blas?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, can I get just one minute recess? There was a discussion I was having with Senator Ruspichu about a concern and I think we're working on some.
With that being said, recess one minute.
I was taught I do hate this criminal.
We had one, we had to tell him.
She knew it's just who is that. Why would we, why would we stop it? Uh, you know, I don't think, uh... You don't know what I mean?
No, 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 no. Yeah, but I didn't go to the gym either, so I better have it now, don't worry.
Mark, go on. Look, maybe here's, Mark, what's going on? Mark, go on.
Stop, wait.
And go. No, I actually have a thing, I'm sitting up there, and then he comes up and goes... He goes up and says, "Please." I think he goes off.
My question, my question, is, is it concerning whether they're not supposed to be different representatives? He never even goes, he's playing at his job.
He's a little bit of a guy who's... He's a little... Yeah, they say that, that, uh, we've got, got it. We will have one, they will have two. It's probably, if you remember, it's... Yeah. It's a little respect, okay, from the, uh, last mission. So if you brought them, they would be... When they get up, they have a commitment, they just, they just, you get them about it, and then they've already made their way back. They've already made their way back. But given all that exists, in order for the future, uh, to be determined by, you know, the prior act, in order ten...
So what happens, an ex-jo package does not apply?
I, I don't think so, because they, they, they are that, but it's completely something, you know, teaching has a law. There was a word for it, there was a word for it, there was no one who did all the, any powers, anything like that. There's nothing, there's no part, so in the next question, uh... Kind of say, well, this is not the means, it wasn't the first time, the last, because it had no relevance at that time. Because it decided after the mother, that, that only triggered, it had another, within three years of that, uh, they're, uh, they give it to them. Yes, I agree.
I believe it, I believe it.
I mean, if you needed it, I mean, that would be very good, that would be, find out, and maybe start the next, try to, kind of, find, find.
Whatever.
And the whole show, and all those, basically, that's one, it's going up. Do you... Can that, do you want to, uh, uh, yeah?
Yeah.
You did the... That's not, uh, I mean, the doctor, that was, that was... You don't, or that, yeah, for you. And that's, yes, of it. What they wore down, it's, uh, it's, uh, it's, uh... It's giving my, uh, some, we used to live place, my place, when you, you...
I'm just scared, wait, my fire train, that looks...
Yeah. Well, it's, well, it's...
As long as you have your very, as long as you have your... Look, shoot the wrong way.
There's one, there's a whole lot of them. They love, they love both that. Yeah, they like the new, it's a great one. One day, one night, it was, you know, I was setting up, I was setting up, they're dominant. I think you're alone at night. I need to do, yeah, that's what we first did, our first setup. When we were, yeah, you know that, yeah. It is still up there. I thought we had, that was definitely when we were going to, uh, work at, uh, the game three fair. And the old, the old game, uh, more stories, more stories.
I know the word, more stories.
Oh, uh, that was part of the... Capital, what did I...
You want to say that? Of course, I know that's true.
That's a long thing, I thought you were, it's like, I was gonna say, I used to go in there, and I'm not gonna laugh, but... We did, that's right. They're all like, the president's just with it. Certainly, it's all pretty quick. He's like, slight, you know? He's been breaking twenty yards.
Wait, did you hear?
Oh, that's right, I think that's it. And then I walk towards them, and they're, they're...
All, all the one of these. All, all the one of... Yeah, that's true, that's true. You know, you're mad. And a kiss. I'm mad. I can't hear something.
Yeah.
Oh shit, every day in the pyramid is before he gets hired. Fifty bucks, fifty dollars. And we can start all.
Senator Frank Blas?
Yes, ma'am?
Oh, God. What we, who it, are we thinking for the comeback far away? Huh?
Well, I'm waiting for a week to figure out what to do.
Yeah. Tina, how long, what do you mean discussion for a week?
Right.
This regular?
Yeah.
Wow, we got a lot to do. No break. I'm calling now. I'm calling now. Are we going to go back here? That's right, what do you got? That's... Never visiting class, that's what you want for it. Hey. Never. I am checked, this is never visiting.
Never visiting, the reason I'm...
Bob Linsky, if he were here, he'd...
We had a, that's me, Bob.
He had a beef on never visiting class. Hey, you guys have a problem with, uh, three days? Oh, man, is it never till two eighteen? Never till sixteen?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Could you do something else if you want?
I don't know. I don't know, it's like, the deep issue. Governor Talbot, what issue? Abort, no, no, literally abort it. It should be, like, anyway. But, uh... Yeah, see, okay, the Governor Talbot, and it's appointed by the governor.
Well, no, here, if you look at the...
The original...
Wait, can we, the, the...
Depending on who the governor is.
Ready? We're back from recess. Senator Frank Blas, you had the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I, I think that the reason why we had the recess is because there was some concern whether or not this, and this legislation that we're discussing here, uh, whether it be able to provide the true intent of why this legislation was actually, uh, thought of to begin with. Um, and that is whether or not, uh, if we, if this is passed, that the initiative, that this initiative can hold true to a, a previous action, uh, by, by the voters, or taken on a previous initiative. Uh, there are the discussions that my colleagues have had, uh, with regards to this, they've received assurances to a very comfortable degree on their part, that, uh, that it wasn't necessary to be able to address anything retroactively, retrospectively, or, or put language in there. It's already basically construed and understood. So I, I think that, that recess was actually very necessary so that we can allay some of those fears. So thank you very much.
You're welcome, uh, Senator Blas. Anybody on the motion? Senator Palacios, you're recognized on the main motion.
Uh, Madam Speaker, thank you for recognizing me. Uh, I recognize that this bill, of course, proposes to put a limit on repetitive initiative. I think this bill started out to address the gaming initiative, and now it, it, it broken to include just any initiative. Now, I'm very concerned of the unintended, uh, I guess, consequence of the passage of this, should it become law. Uh, for example, uh, and I mentioned yesterday, the movement of the Coalition Twenty-One to raise the drinking age to twenty-one is still a very active movement. I consulted, and in fact, I called Dr. Shea to advise him of this bill. I understand that he will be emailing us, uh, an opposition to this bill. But that's just one matter of, of a, a potential initiative that might come about, that if defeated, cannot come back until four years later. And I believe that the Coalition Twenty-One, whose members, of course, include the Mothers Against Drunk Driving, the Red Ribbon Committee, and so forth, is a very noble organization. And I believe that, uh, that it should be given the opportunity to present the, their initiative, uh, every opportunity that, that, that they can. Uh, putting a four-year restriction on the, on presenting again an initiative that's defeated, actually, during the period of four years, there will be four sets of eighteen-year-olds that would join the electorate community. Uh, that is a substantial number of, of voters that, that would come about and be available to make a decision. Uh, it is that unintended consequences and the, uh, the, the unintended consequence of limiting the, the process, inhibiting or diminishing the ability of the people to present a view or an idea, uh, for consideration. It just, just limits the, the, the democratic process of voicing a concern or putting an issue before the people of Guam. And that is my concern. I don't want to be responsible for limiting the people's ability to address the government of their need or any, any idea. And that is my position, uh, it is my position that I cannot support, uh, Bill Two Seventy-Two. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Palacios. Senator Rispio, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, um, um, Madam Speaker. I just want to offer, uh, some information, uh, as in why I would not, uh, support, um, the amendment to take that section out. I know there was some reference to, uh, uh, the drinking age. Maybe the unintended consequence, uh, might be that this will prevent, uh, the drinking age, uh, initiative from coming up, uh, in the next gubernatorial election. Uh, it would not. It would not, and I say it would not, because the two thousand, the drinking age initiative was defeated in the two thousand and two election. The section here in seventeen-two-zero-three-point-one talks about three years after the date of such election. If you recall, in the two thousand and six, uh, election, when the drinking age initiative was put before the people, uh, there was a challenge to that, um, initiative process, and the Superior Court, uh, put a stay in that process to where there was no, uh, election. So that initiative was neither passed nor defeated. It was just not, uh, addressed. So if this bill were to pass as is, uh, I want to allay the concerns of the previous speaker and the concern, uh, of, uh, Dr. Shea, who may be doing an email campaign to say he doesn't support this bill, because he'll scoop the drinking age initiative. Uh, I want to say that it would not. Uh, the drinking age initiative failed in two thousand and two, so it would have been eligible, if this thing were passed prior to two thousand and two, it would have been eligible to be put on the two thousand and six general election, uh, ballot, just as it will be eligible to be put on the two thousand and ten, uh, general election ballot, because it was not a failed, uh, initiative within the last, uh, three years. So, uh, again, I think that should help the previous speaker, uh, move closer to supporting our intent in having greater participation, uh, in all, uh, initiative processes. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator Rispio. Anybody else on the main motion? Senator Koval, you're recognized.
Uh, again, thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, now, they had spoken earlier today on several amendments, uh, put into this Bill Two Seventy-Two. I will reiterate the statement made, uh, by the earlier speaker in regards to unintended consequences, or maybe intended consequences, if there, if that was the, the underlying reasons for certain amendments being placed in here. I go back to the basis for this bill, and it was very specific. It's clear in the legislative findings and intent that this was as a result of a certain initiative, a certain initiative that has been put forward to the people of Guam, not once, not twice, not three, but four times. This bill was introduced in regards to that particular issue of redundant measures coming upon the people of Guam, and having to address this problem, and whether it's an issue of, of special interests, or economics, and what the cost of, of these, constantly having these initiatives put forward to the people. The bill had a public hearing. There are, there is much testimony in support of the bill. And to be frank with you, I, I think it's a good bill, the original intent of the bill. It has evolved, and I must disagree with the earlier speaker, I do not see an opening of direct participation of the people of Guam, but actually restrictions to the voters of this island in the initiative process. And I'm not talking about initiatives that have failed, I'm talking about any new initiative. It's going to, as passed, if this passes as is, there will be the ability to have an initiative in two thousand and ten, in the gubernatorial election. But whether it's a, an initiative that has passed or failed, if there is a desire by the people of Guam in two thousand and eleven, or two thousand and twelve, to move into direct democracy, and there is a number, the, the necessary requisite signatures to allow that to move forward, then the actions of this body, fifteen senators in a unicameral legislative body, I think we're, the only other legislature in one of the territories of states, probably Nebraska, I think, I'm not too sure how many members they have in their body. But fifteen members of a unicameral legislative body made in a decision through an amendment on the floor or by the committee, to change the initiative process, that any measure put forward by the people of this island, by the voters of this island, would now be restricted. Madam Speaker, I repeat myself. Guam, as a member of the American family, as a member of a democ, a nation that is a nation of laws, but of, again, what is critical here, of the democratic process, Guam, a member of, of a nation that has fought for democracy, in fact, some of the wars that we are in right now, or many of the wars that the United States has fought, has been about giving those rights to peoples that have never had that opportunity to decide for themselves. The way this has been done, through amendments made, again, within a body of fifteen, not a two-house legislature, but a one-house legislature, there is no city council, no county seat, no state legislature, not the many layers that you usually see in stateside communities where there is representative democracy and when decisions are made, it goes through a process where there has been a vetting, and usually a vetting where the people of the island or people of the community have a bill introduced, and then there is a public hearing put forward, and they can present their views. But this has been done, it's been done without a public hearing. That's the kind of power being a member of this legislature is. And I know there's been discussions in the past, Twenty-One, Fifteen, there was a time, in fact, I'm hearing from people that they like to go back to Twenty-One. There is a sentiment out there that a unicameral body with fifteen members just has too much power, not, not enough diversity of thought and opinion. And now, my dear colleagues... And now, my dear colleagues, if this measure passes, we would have put further restrictions and limitations on our citizens to participate in direct democracy. My dear colleagues, there was an amendment put forth earlier by the senator from Jigal that would have solved this issue, and it would have been so easy to introduce another bill, we could quickly go through the public hearing process and hear the input of the people of this territory, this community, on the limitations of an initiative and restricting it through a four-year period in a lieutenant gubernatorial election. Maybe a little bit more time burdens them, and we'd have to, again, we couldn't do it immediately like we've done today, and that's, I guess that's the power of a legislature. And maybe there are times we can do those type of things, where we can make floor amendments, and we've done it in the past, but in something so fundamental, so fundamental, not only to Guam, but to every community in the United States, the fundamental right for the citizens to decide under what laws or rules that they will be governed by. And we did it, we did it, us members, and I know the senator from Baragada said it, I wasn't there that day, it was only eight, maybe nine, I'm sorry, the Speaker Wampes is absent today, and there are some other senators not present, and maybe that's why we should have been more cautious. We had an opportunity to get this bill back to its original intent. Unfortunately, it was defeated. Madam Speaker and my dear colleagues, I'm not too sure how this bill goes. Maybe it'll pass. It was passed by eight of this body. Maybe the governor will sign it, and if the governor signs it's ratified into law, maybe, maybe nothing will happen. Maybe there won't be that issue that comes out by the people, and it won't have, as a result of this change, any major or lasting impact in this community, or maybe not. The bottom line is, Madam Speaker, this bill as is does not only solve the problem for some of us in dealing with redundant initiatives, this bill as is has made a fundamental change in the initiative process. And with that, only time will tell what the impacts will be to our community. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
I would prefer to Senator Koval. Anybody else on the main motion on Bill 272? Speaker Pangolinan, you're recognized.
This is Massey, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I certainly listen intently with the arguments placed before us, and it reminds me of what just happened across America with regards to the arguments that are being used to support one's position that happened that was just totally rejected by the overwhelming majority of the American people. We had Senator John McCain and Sarah Palin getting up there and saying they're more democratic than Obama was, and that they're more patriotic than Obama was, because they had a difference of opinion, and that if you supported Obama, you weren't as American or as democratic as America needed to be, and so forth, and that was totally rejected. There is a difference of opinion, but it's not that one is more, loves America more because they want to act one way or loves America less because they want to act another way. It's all part of the democratic process. The issue of the initiatives, one major misstatement, just, I would just say a wrong statement, not even a misstatement, is like, it's like every other community in America. I mean, it's just completely a fabrication to say that when you know that over 20 states do not allow initiatives at all. So to say that we're denying our people something that every other community in America has is just wrong. And so we shouldn't be bolstering our position on just wrong facts. The other thing is that, do I think that the state that allows initiative and a state that doesn't allow initiative doesn't value its people or the opinions of its people more or less? I don't believe that. I believe it reflects the community. So to say, you know, that we're making these changes and so forth, it's a difference of opinion, and it's a difference in terms of how we want to approach it. And I remember we're saying now, well, this bill was, this section was put in as amended by the committee. You know, Madam Speaker, I've looked at many bills in this in which there are sections after sections after sections of the bill, and of course, I'm talking about a budget bill. And we've held in this two years here, we've had five budget bills, where you usually should only have one. I don't know what that says, but I just know that traditionally you have one budget bill, but we've had to do five, I think. And in all of those budget bills, we had hearings on the bill. And then low and behold, when the bill comes out of committee, even items that were never in the bill to begin with come out of committee with brand-new sections that were never part of the budget hearing process, all of a sudden appear in the bill. So is that less democratic, more democratic? Oh, it's a minor thing, so it doesn't really matter? It only matters because I disagree with this issue, so this process should not apply? But when it's something that I agree with, then, oh, it's, you know, it's kind of like, you don't, if you're size 13, then you have less of a foot than it's size 11 or size 6. It's still a foot, and whether, when they cut off that foot, it doesn't matter whether it's a size 11 foot or a size 6 foot, you're cutting off a foot. So to say that this is so much more fundamental than this, and so this is okay because it's not as fundamental than this, if we're arguing about the process, then we have to be consistent. We can't say that I can cut off a size 6 foot because it's only size 6, and I have to have a public hearing to cut off a size 13 foot because it's a size 13. No, you have to have a public hearing to cut off a foot, period. But no, we're applying different standards because one is a size 13 and the other one's a size 6. It doesn't make sense, or else it's not sincere, it's not consistent, absolutely not consistent. So I think that there is, and I recognize, a difference of opinion when you approach the initiative process and how soon you can have it and when you can have it and so forth. But don't say that I'm more democratic and I love the democratic process more because I want to do this and the other one doesn't. It's a difference in the approach, the rationale, the thinking, and that's what defines, differentiates the two, not that one loves democracy less than the other. And so this kind of politics was just completely rejected by the American people when Senator Obama won, because Senator Obama certainly did not say that I love America more than John McCain did. He just said, I honor John McCain for his service to our country, that no one can question his patriotism, but we have a difference of opinion of where this country should go and how we get there. So to say now that because we're going one way on this bill and one way on that bill, that we don't love the people of Guam as much, we don't value their opinion as much, it's just that we have a difference of opinion in the process of having that opinion expressed. And there's where we got to go, I think, because that's how we can move forward. So I just want to plead to all my colleagues, recognize that we have a difference of opinion, but don't try to paint one as being more democratic than the other, or don't paint one as being more concerned about the people and more concerned about the democracy than the other guy. Just say we have a difference of opinion and let the votes fall. Thank you, Ensi Dusmasi.
I would prefer to Speaker Pangolinan. Anybody else on the main motion? If not, then I'll have Senator Guthridge, you can close on your.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm sorry, Madam Speaker, I apologize. I do want to make a request, if there's no objection, that legal counsel be authorized to prepare the severability clause for this bill. Include the severability clause.
On that motion, if there's no objection, motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And just for clarification purposes, on line 14 of page three, it should read, Section 17204 of Title III of Guam Code Annotated is hereby amended to read as follows.
So on page three?
Page three, line 14.
Section four, period.
It should read, Section four, period.
Amend Section 17.
17204 of Title III of Guam Code Annotated to read as follows.
On that motion, if there's no objection, motion carries.
Thank you.
Please proceed.
Thank you. Madam Speaker and colleagues, this has been quite a discussion. I thank all of you from my heart for your valuable input. I think Senator Pangolinan has stated the issues before us, and obviously, we recognize that there are some differences of opinion, and that's healthy in a democracy, and that's why we debate bills in this great hall. I stand firmly committed to this bill, and I believe the people of Guam do as well. They have said so repeatedly over the last few years, and we take our cues from the people. I don't believe this bill takes anything away from the electorate. If anything, this bill reinforces the voice of the people. In addition, Madam Speaker, I think it's also important, because this bill provides some additional guidelines for the initiative process in our territory, which has been missing in the past, and has really been, as a result, the cause of a lot of confusion and disconsolation in our community when we hold initiative elections. So I think putting these guidelines in place and moving forward is a great contribution to the election process on Guam. We have listened to the people in drafting this bill, and we need to move forward on it. We may have differences of opinion, but let that show when we take a final vote on this bill. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
On the motion, can you want to go?
On the motion, Madam Chair, I move this goes down to third reading for a vote.
If there are no objections, motion carries. We're on the next bill, which is Bill Number 282. Senator Benjamin Cruz, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I move that the body accept Bill 282 as substituted by the committee.
On that motion, if there's no objections, motion carries, Senator Cruz.
I move that Bill 282 be placed in the third reading file with an opportunity for us to discuss it at this point.
On that motion, Senator Cruz, please proceed.
Thank you very much. Madam Speaker, before I proceed on this bill, I want to assure all the members of this legislature and the viewing public that this bill was introduced back in March of this year and has nothing to do with a rampant rumor that is running throughout the community that I'm going to be leaving, that there's going to be need for a special election coming soon. I hope everybody keeps praying that I go away, but please, at the present time, I neither have an application in nor have I made substantial donation to the Obama campaign to where they would even know my name. So I just want that disclaimer clear in the beginning. This bill was introduced, Madam Speaker, early in the term. In fact, it was one of the first bills that I introduced. And the reason I introduced it was because I had the distinction this year, being the only person who was elected twice in one calendar year. The election was in January, and I went through another one 10 months later, 11 months later, as it were. But during the campaign for that special election in January 2008, those of you that bothered to listen to the morning talk shows and the editorial columns in the paper insisted that having a special election was a waste of precious government revenue, resources. When we had the public hearing on this bill, the acting director of the Guam Election Commission, Ms. Stephanie Torres, I think her name was, or Chagulov, appeared and mentioned that the special election that was conducted earlier this year cost the people of Guam A special election or any kind of election on this island takes a considerable amount of money, on direct cost and also indirect cost. We saw that in this last election, where GPD insisted that there was no money for their overtime and were balking at the thought of providing full coverage at the polling sites. So besides the regular $150,000 or $250,000 that it costs to conduct just what the Election Commission does for the election, there are additional in-kind costs from the GPD, from DPW, providing the buses and the bus drivers at 4:00 in the morning and at 10:00 at night. So there's a lot of cost to having a special election. And so there was a lot of criticism about spending all this money to elect one person. There was a lot of talk that the way that it should have, what should have happened, rather than having, conducting a special election, was that the Election Commission should just have confirmed who the 16th person was at the last general election and named that person to fill the vacancy. There was a considerable amount of discussion about this throughout the community, and I felt that I didn't want to come into this legislature and play like I didn't hear the criticism that was made about the cost of the election that put me in this body. So I made sure that one of the first bills that I introduced was Bill 282. And in it, I asked and proffered four different types of scenarios on which I thought that a vacancy can and should be filled. I suggested that the governor, with the advice and consent of the legislature, fill the vacancy. I suggested that it might be done by a recommendation by a majority of the mayor's council because they're so in. they’re so in touch with the community. I suggested that maybe the—that the 16th person on the ballot be the one that was placed in the vacancy. And I also suggested that it be by appointment by a majority of the members of the legislature remaining after the vacant seat was created by the passing or the resignation of a member of the legislature. We conducted the public hearing, and I thank Chairman Wampat for conducting the hearing early in April. And at the public hearing, there really wasn’t much public testimony. There were—there was a suggestion that the 16th person be provided, there was suggestion that, you know, that the mayors be considered, but there really was no overwhelming testimony on either of the four options. What was interesting, that subsequent to the public hearing, the chairman of—the new chairman of the Democratic Party of Guam, Polar Luhon, former Senator Polar Luhon, did submit a written testimony wherein she suggested that we adopt the Hawaii model. In Hawaii, the party that—whose member resigned or passed on, which created the vacancy, that that party would have the opportunity to provide three names to the governor, and the governor would then make a nomination—I mean, would appoint one of the three recommended by the vacant party’s nominees. I’m not sure why the committee substituted the 16th person. Maybe that was because there may have been two or three people at the hearing that said they wanted the 16th person, but there really was no overwhelming swell of testimony at the hearing, since there weren’t very many people that came out anyway on what should be done to fill the vacancy. But I really do think, Madam Speaker, that it is imperative that we find an alternative to a special election, because as— as Senator Raspicio mentioned during the—in discussion of the last bill, I had an analysis done of how many people voted in the various elections, more specifically for me. But just to show the number of people that participated in the election, in 2004, 36,000 people came out and voted. In the election we just completed, 35,091 people—I mean, voters showed up to vote. In the special election in which I was elected, barely 17,000 people voted. That’s half of what voted for the—for the 15 members that are going into the—in the 30th Guam Legislature. And so, in the special election, I only received 8,665 votes, and that was sufficient to have me come into the legislature. That was probably half of what the person who had—was a 16th person in the 2006 election received to have the 16th vote. So we spent a lot of time earlier talking about a democracy and more people having a voice. I’m not taking a position, either way, on any of the five suggestions, the gubernatorial appointment and legislative confirmation, legislative vote among the majority of the remaining members, a mayor’s appointment, the 16th person, or the Hawaii version. There’s now five before us, but in the bill, the committee has substituted and suggested that we take the 16th person. That does not preclude any members of this legislature from saying that they would like to go back to one of the other alternatives. But I really do think, Madam Speaker, that we, as a legislature, have to and should find another alternative to filling one vacancy in the legislature. Or we might go back to what we had in the mid-'80s, where there was no special election unless there were three vacancies, but that was when there were 21 members and you could still operate with one member out. But now with 15, if we waited until three vacancies, you know, there may never be a special election, but the legislature would be impeded with—working with only 13 or 14 members. And so I bring this to the body. The committee has substituted and determined to recommend—and we’ve accepted for discussion today—it’s recommendation that the 16th person fill that vacancy. But I say to my colleagues here, the other four options are still out there on the table, and if anybody feels an overwhelming desire to have one of the others replace the proposal that it’d be the 16th member, I would not—I would not be very adverse to it. But I really do think that we can no longer expend all the time and money. Very, very important that we realize that the special election earlier this year cost at least $150,000, plus probably another $100,000 in additional costs. And so we’ve got to find an alternative. And so you, Madam Speaker, knew that at the hearing what was said, and I’m hoping that at some point you will come off the dais and speak to this issue, because I think there were only three of us that attended the public hearing that day. So at some point, I just want my colleagues to know that I’m sincere in responding to the criticism that was made about expending $150,000 for my special election earlier this year. I mean, not that it was mine, it was the special election for which I won in January, but I am sensitive to the fact that that’s a large sum of money that could be better used for school supplies in the—you know, in the Guam Public School System, knowing how—what the dire needs are in school supplies. And I’d like us to, like we did the last two bills, really seriously discuss this issue as to whether or not—you know, there are some that insist, and I know there’s actually a sixth version—I mean, not a version, but there is a sixth alternative, and that’s a status quo, that, as some have said earlier, you know, this is a democracy, and everybody should have an opportunity to vote, as opposed to having some appointment done. I just want—for the information of the members, in the U.S. Congress, there are two ways a vacancy is filled. It’s interesting, but in the House of Representatives, if there is a vacancy, like when Ron Emanuel does not go into the next Congress to become the Chief of Staff for President Obama, the state of Illinois, or at least the district which he comes from in Chicago, will have to have a special election. But if Senator Hillary Clinton accepts the position of Secretary of State in President Obama’s administration, the governor of New York will make the nomination to replace—
He’s the Alaska model.
Well, or in the Alaska model, if Ted Stevens is not—is not allowed to sit by his colleagues because of his recent conviction that Governor Sarah Palin could resign her seat and allow her lieutenant governor to assume the position of governor and appoint her to the vacant seat in the U.S. Senate. So there are various ways that these are done throughout the country, and I just am hoping that we, as a deliberative body, will find some way of dealing with this situation locally, so that we don’t have to expend the type of money that we do expend in conducting an election just on the government side, not to even talk about the amount of money that is spent for the campaign in the special election. I thank my colleagues, and again, I’m not married to any of the versions that I tossed out there. In fact, I was criticized for having so many options, but I thought that it is imperative that we, as a community, address it, and I want it to be as open as possible to any kind of options that could address this issue. But I really do think we have to address it, and we have to address it now that we’ve completed an election, and before there is a vacancy—if there is a vacancy, God forbid, and hoping that all of us remain safe and will last through the next two years. So thank you again, Madam Speaker, and I look forward to hearing a very spirited discussion by my colleagues in this very deliberative body. Thank you.
Point Pevetu, Senator Cruz, on the motion. Are there any other speakers? Senator Eddie Cavill, you’re recognized.
Yeah, thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Again, it’s kind of ironic that we’re speaking on—actually, this past session, we’ve been having some pretty intense policy matters that have come upon this body, and I think we all have a lot of respect for each other. Even in the earlier bill, it’s not trying to one-up, saying one is more chamois, or one is more American than the other, or who believes in the—
(laughing) Who believes in the Democratic—
Or the Democratic—in terms of the democratic process, I think we all have our philosophical beliefs, and how we vote on it, it’s not—that’s the tough thing about some of these policy issues, and whether it’s abortion issue, or an initiative, or now, of course, on election vacancies, it really goes to the heart, and it’s not—I don’t think it’s something that’s partisan in one way, Republican or Democrat, or independent. It’s just each individual representative here has a core set of principles, and how we move in this process, we try to deliberate and try to come to a common ground in most issues. And then, of course, there are certain issues that are a little bit more difficult because they are very fundamental. Now this one, and I’m going to compliment the author of the bill, because he’s given so many options. I’m of the firm belief that if it ain’t broke, don’t fix it. You know, if you look at that very special time that—I know it was very special extenuating circumstances that occurred earlier in the 29th Guam Legislature with the death of our former speaker, you also look—it hasn’t happened much in the past. There—I think—and maybe some of the veterans can correct me, but before that, there may have been two other instances where there’s been a vacancy, and with that vacancy, and I’m not even too sure, but an election to replace the departing senator. Now, maybe in the past, it was not as unique a situation, because in the past, as what occurred in the 29th Guam Legislature, there was such a very slim line in the majority between one majority and minority, was just one senator. In the past, there was—it wasn’t as consequential, because it did not change the majority. There was also—and if you recall, because of that—the circumstances and the standing rules, we had a lot of debate, and actually, the body politic—it was not the election itself that, to me, was the major issue. I think it was—I think the better man won. Actually, the good news is, the three folks that ran, all three of them are going to be in the 30th Guam Legislature. So—and it shows, too. If someone has a desire to serve the people and makes that effort in a special election, sooner or later, and sometimes some sooner and some later, but the people afford them that opportunity to serve. The issues that occurred were not, in my opinion, the election, but obviously, because of the complications of a very unique time in Guam’s history. But be that as it may, okay, two, maybe three, maybe three occurrences—I’m—correct me, my history, if I’m wrong, if there’s more. Is it four? Okay, and there may be four. But again, you know, it’s $150,000 for at least the last election, but my colleague—my dear colleagues, like I mentioned earlier, we are also unique, and there are—there’s no—again, there’s other states, there’s different layers when it comes to representative democracy in states, and whether it’s a city, county, state, and then, of course, the federal level, where, again, there’s representation in the federal level. We are fairly unique in that we are a unicameral body, so there’s a lot of responsibility given to just this one, single legislative body. I was ways in—well, I’m gonna be—this is my last term as Ways and Means Chair, but $150,000—I—you know, it’s—I know these have been very difficult times, but again, as is the instance of the last election, and because of the value I see in the democratic process, in particular to what is unique to Guam, I personally believe there was nothing wrong with the system. And to the senator from PT, congratulations, you did come into the 29th Guam Legislature ahead of the other two individuals that also ran against you. They’re coming into the 30th Guam Legislature, I think, and whether it—if—if in that special election, and whether it was 9,000, 17,000, 40,000, 50,000, but those individual voters that took the initiative to come to vote for you, I think their vote should be counted. And the majority spoke, and they wanted the senator from PT in. There was nothing wrong with that process. So I want to thank him, I want to congratulate him. This was an issue that came about as a result of a very unique set of circumstances. He won, and I thought that he won fair and square. He came in, and once the dust was settled in his legislature, became a very productive member of the 29th Guam Legislature. I saw nothing wrong that occurred. And so, my dear colleagues, I’m just one voice, and again, this is one of those issues that each one of us has got to reflect on themselves, and being in a representative democracy, we’re going to make a decision here that will, or maybe, change the outcome of future elections, or maybe keep the status quo. So far, I think everything went right. The people decided, they picked the senator from PT, he served us well in the 29th. They didn’t pick the two other individuals, Senator Lake Titegui and Senator Lake Tomata, but they will be presenting—representing the people of Guam, the 30th Guam Legislature. The democratic process moved forward, and I see no reason for it to change. Again, I thank you for the bill, but this is one senator that believes that if it ain’t broke, don’t fix it. And again, I stand against any change to the current process. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Point Pevetu, Senator Cavill, anybody else on the main motion? Senator Palashis, you’re recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I have, of course, no reservation about the status quo. However, I support the idea presented here in this bill. The term of the senator is every two years. I’m sure that should there be a vacancy, it would be less than two years. Now, I tend to agree with the third option, which is on page three, line 17, and that is that should there be a vacancy existing, that the legislature itself will appoint that and fill that vacancy. The only potential problem, of course, is if the vacancy resulted in seven and seven, then probably it would be a stalemate, but that would be a challenge, of course, and we’re going to have to deal with that. But I guess, you know, it would be a good start at that point. But definitely, there’s a merit to this. My view here might seem opposite to the view on Bill 272 with respect to the initiative, but again, the shortage of time here, again, should there be a vacancy, I know it would be less than two years, because the term is only for two years. And again, it will be decided by this body who will fill the vacancy for the remaining of the term, which is less than two years. And so I support the idea, and I will support the third option, which is line 17, page three. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Senator Palashis, Senator Tenoyan.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I actually have reservations, at least with the last argument. You know, let's play this out. My first thought is that, yeah, it's $150,000. That's no small amount of money. And I'm actually torn between going to a new approach versus staying with the old approach, but here's, here's the fundamental thing driving me right now. Democracy's not cheap, neither is freedom. I mean, this is kind of half a dozen of one and six of the other. So, you want to save $150,000, we want to allow for the 16th and 17th member who was not elected to the top 15 to automatically succeed whatever vacancy becomes available in any given legislature so long as they fit within the timeframes. But in the last legislature, last term, interesting, or last election at least, we had, I think it was Telo Titegui, right, was number 16?
16.
And then, of course, we had Senator B.J. Cruz and then our good Senator-elect Tom Adah. And then, if you looked at the way it would have gone, the people would have elected and we would have seated Telo Titegui, but that in and of itself is the real sentiment, is that the people of Guam had an opportunity to vote. Again, backing, you know, they're right, my good colleague from Mitie was right, pretty big issues we're talking about in this session, you know, and this is one of the more fundamental ones, is the right to choose one's representatives. And when we had the special election, it wasn't Telo Titegui, notwithstanding the previous election, she came in number 16, she wasn't selected to come in the special election, notwithstanding all of her qualities and abilities. She had to vie against the likes of Tom Adah, one of the more popular senators of Guam, and of course, Senator B.J. Cruz, again, one of the more popular senators of Guam. Senator B.J. Cruz was elected. Now, that is what drives our democratic process, is that we as individuals get to go out and vote for the best person for the job. Isn't that what we're all supposed to be doing in an electoral process? We go through one cycle of elections and we say, okay, there's a vacancy for whatever reason, now let's go ahead and have the opportunity to again choose. If Telo Titegui were to have just succeeded to fill that vacancy left by the most senior senator in Guam's history, good Speaker Tonya Pinkel, we wouldn't have the benefit of Senator B.J. Cruz's wisdom right now. So, I think that to me kind of tells the first tell. The portion of the bill that kind of is problematic to me as it stands now is the last part. If the, those individuals, 16th and 17th, the next highest ranked finisher in votes in that general election shall be appointed. If such finisher is ineligible or unwilling or unable to be appointed, the legislature shall have 30 days to fill the vacancy. That along with the previous comments of my good friend from Oriti Chalapago about getting the majority vote to legislature to determine who that next senator will be, be highly politicized, polarized toward those who have the greatest power, of course, in legislature, if it's an eight-man legislature, if it's a 10-man, nine-man, whatever majority, that will drive who's then replacing, not the people. Not the people who really, from which we derive our power. We derive our authority purely from the electorate themselves. And are we going to say that the, those who have the majority control of this legislature are best determined, or who have the greatest wisdom to determine who should fill that seat? I don't think so. Democrat or majority, I'm sorry, Democrat or Republican, the majority party is not more powerful, more wise and more capable of determining for this island who's best suited to fill the vacancy. The people are. And I want to save money, I want to be economical as much as the next guy, but are we going to do it at the expense of, again, one of the more fundamental things that drive our community and our nation, which is the ability to choose? That freedom to choose between Senator B.J. Cruz, Senator-elect Tom Adah, or Senator Telo Titegui? The people chose. The people chose who they wanted to be to fill that position and Telo Titegui is just as capable, I think, of being a great senator as anyone in this hall. But isn't it really the cost of democracy, that price that we all pay, that extra effort that we all go through to elect those who represent us on this island? Is it not worth $150,000? The cost of democracy may be high. What is the cost for not having that democracy? So, my colleagues, I'll tell you, I really have serious reservations. There's a Hawaii model which is, there's a Hawaii model which I think may be befitting if we're going to go down this road. And I have my staff working on that, I'd like the opportunity to be able to advance that amendment, but I don't want to forestall debate. Would you be able to give me time to do that, Madam Speaker?
I'm going to take a one-minute recess right now.
Thank you.
(inaudible)
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 (inaudible)